Motion recessed, executive session and reconvened in open session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to ratify the teacher contract, NEAM Teachers Association.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And motion to extend the lease of John O'Conne School through June of 2023.
Second.
A motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
A motion to seal the executive session minutes pursuant to section forty-two, forty-six, seven of Rhode Island general law.
Second.
A motion to second to seal the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's move on to number two, the public form, and I'll just read it in. Pursuant to rules of rule twenty-five of the council, citizens may address the town on one subject only, said subject of substantive town business neither discussed nor during the regular meeting, nor related to personnel or job performance. Citizens may speak for no longer than five minutes and must submit a public participation form to the council clerk prior to the start of the meeting. All items discussed during this session will not be voted upon. And we don't have any forms, correct?
We don't have any forms.
Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to talk about anything that's not on the, on the meeting, on the docket tonight? Okay, excellent. So tonight we have a zoning board interview. We typically interview new zoning board, people that apply for that position, and tonight is the third alternate position is still open, and we do have one person that applied, so we ask a series of questions to make sure we're getting the best person, the best fit for the, for the zoning board, even as an alternate. So that's what we're gonna do right now, so just bear with us for a few minutes, and Emily, again, sorry to put you on the spot, but it is what it is, so. Do you want to step up to the, to the mic so that everyone can hear you? So am I HR tonight? Okay, excellent, excellent, thank you.
Motion begins said interview.
Second.
A motion to second began, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Emily, so there's a series of questions we'll ask. We do have your written response, so thank you for that. And you did a good job with that, so we appreciate that. So the first question is, why do you want to be on the zoning board?
Well, generally speaking, I really just want to get involved in my community. I've been living here my whole life, and so after talking with some friends and family and locals, they really encouraged me to look at some boards to apply to, and after doing some research, I thought zoning board, you could make the most impact, even, I guess, as a third alternate, so that is the one I applied to. I think it's a really great opportunity to learn and make a, make a good impact in the community.
Excellent. Okay. The second question is, what experience do you have that would qualify you to be a member of the zoning board?
I don't have any professional experience that would necessarily qualify me. However, I've really taken a personal interest in zoning and how towns are run in the past couple of years, and I am fairly confident that I'm a very quick learner and can pick things up accordingly.
Okay, excellent. The third question, Emily, is what useful knowledge or perspective from your own personal experience would you bring to this position?
Like I said, I have lived here my whole life, my whole family's from here, my vovo, my uncle, my mom, my sister, and so I really care about everyone living here, and I want to make sure, you know, I plan on living here for a really long time. I want to make sure my future children, grandchildren have a really nice place to live, and I think zoning is obviously one of the most important parts of that.
Excellent. Thank you. What do you think is the most important responsibility of a zoning board member?
I think the most important responsibility is weighing the individual rights of our community members and with the social and economic needs and desires of the greater community, so luckily here in Middletown, we have our comprehensive plan, so just making sure the zoning board makes decisions based upon that.
Okay. What would you like Middletown to look like five years from now?
I would like to see continued improvements with pedestrian and cyclist safety. I want to make sure people, if they want to ride their bike to the beach or go to the store, or just take a, take a ride on their bike, I want to make sure they're safe and they have the opportunity to do so. I would really love to see the safety of all of that improved, so they don't have to have a car. If they can't afford a car, I think that's really important to, to have that opportunity for people. So just because there's not a million crashes on bikes and pedestrian, you know, deaths on the streets, doesn't mean they, that doesn't mean there won't be any, and so I want to make sure we keep our streets safe for those folks. Second, I want to make sure we're making decisions aligned with easing climate change. I don't think there's, you know, any other choice there, and then third, of course, I think we can all agree we're in a housing crisis, so really addressing that and making sure we make decisions that are, you know, maybe more aligned with some mixed use zoning, making sure we are building, building missing middle housing, for example, making sure we have really nice places for people to live.
Okay. What do you believe is Middletown's most important land issue, and how should, how should it be addressed? How would you address it?
I think the most important land issue is, of course, balancing our wonderful open spaces and recreational spaces with our economic issues and development and housing, for example. Like I said, we, we are in a housing crisis. So I think it's clear, we value our open spaces. I don't want to get rid of them at all. I think they're really beautiful, but I think we also need to make sure we have places to live, and so a solution to that, and I think we are addressing this. I know there are lots of plans going on, for example, the development that's going to be possibly West Main Road, Olive Lane, I think those are really wonderful starts to, to addressing this issue, so it's building upon places that are already developed rather than implementing more sprawl and taking over some of those open spaces. I would like to see those, you know, preserved if possible.
Okay. What ideas or suggestions you have regarding economic development in Middletown?
I think when we look at economic developments and improvement of towns, we need to make sure things are resilient and can adapt over time. So I would like to just say that first, and so evaluating short-term and long-term plans, for example, big box stores, so that's a type of place where when we build them, the only thing that could be there are big box stores, and it turns out those types of places don't make a lot of money, from my understanding, you can correct me if I'm wrong, and this is just an example. So when making decisions, making sure when we are building things and putting in new infrastructure, it can adapt and actually make our town money, and big box stores apparently don't do that, and so when they inevitably go out of business in our town, I would really like to see some plans that aren't just another big box store, maybe a different sort of use for that space, rather than just a big parking lot in a big giant building that is not going to last very long.
Okay. And this is the question you've been looking for, it's the last one, all right? It's a simple one, but we do have to ask it, okay? So regular zoning board meetings typically take place the fourth Tuesday of every month, starting at six PM, and special meetings are called on an as, as, on an as-need basis. Are you available to make those meetings?
Yes.
You are, okay. Any councils, any other questions? That maybe we didn't ask of Emily? Vice President?
Just a comment. I did have to look up Jux's position.
My partner's a lawyer, so he uses that word a lot.
Because I didn't even think it was a word, it was possibly mistyped, but it is a word.
I thought the same thing, I'm like, is this a typo?
Yeah, what is that?
I don't use that word often.
Yeah.
Very well-written, and you're well-spoken, so.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Happy to be here.
Any councils, any, Council Logan?
Just, just one comment, thank you.
You're welcome.
For applying.
Yeah.
I think it's a breath of fresh air to see somebody new step forward who's born here, raised here, lived here her whole life, want to make a difference, so thank you for applying.
My pleasure.
Okay.
Happy to help.
Mr. President?
This is Flynn.
And I was, I echo Councilor Logan's sentiment, and I think that the third alternate position is actually perfect for someone who is just starting as a town volunteer. You are welcome to participate fully in the conversation, but don't vote unless the regular members are out three steps down, and I, like Council Logan said, I'm very excited to see somebody new that's interested and willing to take some of their discretionary time to devote towards the town. It's, it's actually, remember, if you're not having fun, you're doing something wrong. So spread the word, please, and I, I hope we see more of the same with our other residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do. Okay, so Emily, I just, my only comments was, I, I spent four and a half years on the zoning board, or five years, whatever it was, in the mid, mid, mid nineties, and I knew, basically, I lived here my whole life, and I didn't know a lot about zoning, and it was a, it was a wealth of, of information and that I learned, and I thought it was just awesome. I really enjoyed being on the, on the zoning board. Once you start understanding all the, you know, the, the criteria when you're making your decisions, and you know, as long as you're fair and you're upfront, it never comes back on you, you know, that's the way we always, I've always approached, I'm sure the other councils always approach it too, and, you know, whether people agree with you or disagree with you, I think if you speak from the heart, and your reasoning's solid with the facts, I think that's the right way to go, and I think you possess all of that, and I think you did a great job in your questions, and I think you, the way you represent yourself this evening and handled yourself with the questions and your answers, I think you'd be a great addition to the zoning board, so.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
All right, so typically, we have, thank you. Typically, we will move these, or they're at the end, we have the answers beforehand, so I asked Wendy to move it up, if you're okay with that? Okay. Vice President?
Motion to appoint Emily Tessier to the zoning board review, third alternate for a term expiring in April of 2023.
Second.
A motion to second to appoint Emily Tessier to the zoning board review for third alternate for a term expiring April 2023. Is there any further conversation or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody oppose? Welcome, thank you. All right.
Thank you.
You'll do great. All right, yeah. Okay, town business update, number five, town administrator will provide an update on the town projects.
Motion begins said project update.
Second.
Motion to second to begin, all in favor?
Aye.
And again, I think the last time, we've kind of gone through a little evolution with this from the start. It's a good thing, so that the residents can see and hear what's going on. But the last time Mr. Brown did it, it was perfect. It was something he deals with every day. You know, and, and that's all it is, is an update. It's not question and answers back and forth, it's an update, okay? So Mr. Brown.
Affordable housing, the consultant is now working on the master plan. We have had some difficulty just getting some of the subconsultant work contracted. However, the targeted submission for the master plan for the Berkeley Peckham and Olive and School properties is the planning board meeting in June. The town center project, we had a public hearing on April twenty-first, it was well-attended. We received a lot of good feedback at the meeting as well as online. There's a special planning board meeting coming up next week, I believe, next Thursday, where they'll review the comments and start preparing their recommendation to come back to the town council.
Could you just pull that mic a little closer, please?
I can.
Thank you.
Yep. The next topic is roads. The town engineer and the director of public works have been revising the road paving program, making some adjustments. We currently have a bid out, and that contract should be coming back to the town council for consideration. And just, we continue to work off of the road condition index, addressing the worst, the roads in town that are in the worst condition first. Tax reform, we are implementing the tiered tax residential program. As of the twenty-seventh, we had two thousand six hundred and seventy-four residents registered for the program, and the deadline to apply is today, so that, that has been going well, and we'll continue to make sure people are aware of it. The Middletown Outreach Program, which is the educational wellness program that the council has formed a committee on, and is, I believe, still looking for members to join. They have, I would say, the most important discussion that's going on is they're working with the police department and fire department to put together what sounds like is going to be a one-week public safety academy for our young people. So Chief Keuer and Chief Peplo are working with the committee on that, and I believe that's will be the focus of, of their discussion at their next meeting, which I believe is Wednesday?
Thursday.
Thursday this week, so that's going along well. The school building committee, we had a meeting last week, the committee met, and we discussed looking at a new model of school buildings, and essentially what was discussed is a program that would be two campuses in town. There would be a high school and middle school located on the Gaudet property, and there would be a new consolidated elementary school at the high school property. It was a very exciting discussion, and one that will continue with the community for the upcoming months as we consider the scope of the project and the cost of the project. The Middletown IT department, basically, there's a working five-year plan that, that we continue to address. I can say that currently, we're focused on looking at our wastewater information systems and security-related there, too. So that's our focus as of right now. The council has discussed a bond for infrastructure repair. A lot of that is related to issues that we had on Colony Drive and Shore Drive. The goal was trying to get that on this upcoming election, the, we're running into an issue, getting borings to figure out what the scope and the budget for that work would be. I did get a number of calls from people in the Birchwood neighborhood, because they've seen the DigSafe markings throughout the neighborhood, and for anyone who might be listening and wondering what those are, that, that is the the company that would be doing the borings throughout the neighborhood to determine how much bedrock is out there, and how much digging we would actually need to do in order to get the water out of the areas that are flooding down to near Gansett Bay. Pickleball courts, we're waiting on news from DEM about our grant application. We are supposed to hear in the spring, so I'm, I'm hoping we hear about that shortly. Keeping Middletown clean, most recently, the state of Rhode Island has kicked off a program called Keep Roadie Litter Free. One of the things that the state has asked is that we add their Keep Roadie website to ours, so Matt Shealy has added that link to our website, and I've reached out to the Open Space Committee to see whether or not, or what kind of event we can put on to go along with the Keep Roadie Litter Free program. So we'll, we'll hear back from them, hopefully after their next meeting. ARPA money projects, the special, there's a special planning board meeting this Thursday, May fifth, at six PM. They will review the projects to ensure that what's been submitted by the departments as well as the community are consistent with a comprehensive land use plan. Town school consolidation of backroom offices like finance and facilities, that's on hold pending the discussion that's currently ongoing about regionalization between Middletown and Newport. For water issues, Mayford River Project, we actually submitted a large grant application. It's, it's actually, we're working with the NRCS, so NRCS has actually submitted the application. I want to say the scope is thirteen, fourteen million dollars, that would help fund the project. The project itself is to restore the Mayford River, the flood plain down in the area of Berkeley Avenue, and it would help alleviate not only flooding in that area, but also water quality issues, so that application has been submitted, and we continue to work on that. Short-term rentals, I think that's why everyone's here tonight, or the most people, so that is going to be discussed this evening. The build-out study recommendations, the council's received the impact study, and right now, we're, we're basically in a mode of, of basically doing a BMP inventory and trying to identify budget dollars to, to basically start moving that forward. And then in the last thing that I've provided to you is a schedule that was updated by the planner, which details out the planning board request that you have, which are currently outstanding, and what their status is. And that's the town business update.
Okay, Sean, thank you very much, good job.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to consent calendar, Vice President?
Motion to approve the consent calendar minus number eight.
Second.
A motion to second to approve the consent calendar minus number eight, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number eight, approval of FY twenty-twenty-three budget schedule. Monday, May sixteen, twenty-twenty-two, town council officially receives the budget. Wednesday, May eighteen, twenty-twenty-two, meeting, budget meeting with school department at six PM. Saturday, June fourth, twenty-twenty-two, budget meeting for all funds, general fund and, and, you know, sewer fund and refuse and recycling fund and parks and recreation fund, that starts at eight AM. We typically do them on Saturdays and go as long as we need to, to get through them. Monday, June sixth, twenty-twenty-two, budget review, that time is yet to be determined. Hopefully, we get that time out there soon. Wednesday, June fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two, first public hearing on the budget at six PM. And Wednesday, a week later, June twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two, it's a second public hearing at six PM. And again, those are public hearings on, on the tax dollars that, that we all pay, so, you know, there's your opportunity to have your say if you don't either like something or want something, or or feel something's not needed, so. Council of Flynn?
Thank you, Mr. President.
I was getting to you.
I just need to let council know that I have a conflict on the June twenty-second date and will not be able to attend.
So that'll be when we approve the budget. Is that, so, is that another date we can look at? It's nice to have all, it's nice to have everybody here. What's that?
It looks like the twenty-third, I can verify that definitely tomorrow.
If you could verify that and send an email out, and I just caution the council just to, to, when they respond at the emails, sometimes it's considered a rolling quorum and violates the Open Meetings Act, so just be careful what you discuss on email.
Alternatively, put it in for the twenty-third, that will check.
Yeah, it'd be nice if.
And I'll send out an email saying the twenty-third's all set. If it's not, then we'll pick another day.
Thank you so much, Wendy. Okay. Mr. Welch?
Motion to approve the said budget schedule with that.
Amendment.
Amendment.
Second.
A motion to second to approve the budget schedule with amendment to the twenty-third. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, number nine, applications of the following named persons, firms, or corporations for new mechanical amusement device licenses, license for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three licensing year.
That was part of consent.
Oh, sorry. I got, I got excited, I'm sorry. Let's move on to licenses. Number twelve, application of Jennifer Barola, Portsmouth, Rhode Island, for a tattoo license for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three licensing year to be used at five-five-four West Main Road. This is new.
Motion to grant said license.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Is Jennifer here? Jennifer? Any comments you want to make? Okay. Anybody have any questions of Jennifer? Thank you for coming. We appreciate it. We have a motion to second to grant said license, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Number thirteen, application of Mikino Pizza Pub, LLC DBA, Mikino Pizza Pub, fifty-nine Aquinic Avenue for a mechanical amusement device license for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three licensing year, this is new, and it's one jukebox, one pool table, and one game.
Motion to grant said license.
Second.
A motion to second to grant, is anybody here from Mikino? Okay, does council have any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Okay, number fourteen, application for a special event permit from St. George's School for graduation day slash prize day to be held at St. George's School, three-seventy-two Purgatory Road on Sunday, May twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-two, graduation dinner beginning at five-thirty PM until seven-thirty PM, and Monday, May thirty, the twenty-twenty-two, luncheon beginning at twelve-thirty PM until two-thirty PM.
Motion to grant said special event permit.
Second.
We have a motion to second to grant. Any discussion? Rick, what's for dinner? Just kidding. All right, we'll be there. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Number fifteen, application for special event permit for St. George's School Camp Ramla, camp benefit sale to be held at St. George's School Hockey Rink on Saturday, June eleventh, twenty-twenty-two, and Sunday, June twelfth, twenty-twenty-two, from AP, eight AM to twelve PM, and this includes a waiver, includes a request to waive the permit fee.
Motion to grant the special event permit and waive the permit fee.
Second.
A motion to second to grant, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Does anybody oppose? Number sixteen, application for a special event permit for Wannam autonomy golf and country club for Wannam autonomy, one-hundredth anniversary celebration to be held at one-fifty-two Browns Lane on Saturday, August thirty, August thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two, from five-thirty PM to ten-thirty PM.
Motion to grant said special event permit.
Second.
A motion to second to grant, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck on the hundredth year for the Wannam Autonomy Golf Club. Number seventeen, application for special event permit, excuse me, from Aquinic Community Table, for the Aquinic Community Table Saturday Farmer's Market to be held at Embrace Home Loans, twenty-five Enterprise Drive, beginning Saturday, May seventh, twenty-twenty-two, through Saturday, October twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two, from nine AM to twelve PM, includes a request to waive the permit fee.
Motion to grant said special event permit and waive the permit fee.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Mrs. Flynn?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a question on the listing of the businesses that will be represented. They have the liability insurance expiration dates and their retail sales tax permit expiration dates, and they are going to be during the timeframe that the request has been submitted. And they are going to be during the timeframe that the request has been submitted. And I didn't know if, as a condition, it needed to be noted that to participate, those would have to be renewed and up to date through the entire timeframe. I don't know how that's normally handled, Wendy.
Wendy, is that something?
Normally take care of that. That would be up to the person running the farmer's market.
So do we want to make sure that those items are up to date, or are we assume that they're going to?
Never done it before.
I don't think we'd want to take responsibility for ensuring people have insurance where the event's happening on private property. It really is between the vendors and Embrace Home Loans and the nonprofit.
That wasn't my implication. I was wondering if we wanted to make it a condition of approval that to participate, those items would be up to date. Many of them expire in June. Most of the sales tax permits expire in June, and there are some liability insurances that expire in April, May. They're, they're expired.
Private property, though, right?
So if we make a condition, then you're taking on responsibility to monitor that, and I don't think that's something the town wants to.
That's fine. I just wanted to throw it out there, make sure that we were covered.
Okay.
No pun intended.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mrs. Flynn. We have a motion in the second to grant said special event permit and waive the permit fee. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Number eighteen, application of special event permit from Newport County, Y M C A for the Newport County Y M C A Camp Clocks Aquatics Camp to be held June twenty seventh, twenty twenty two, to September ninth, twenty twenty two, Monday through Friday, nine A. M. To three P. M. At Second Beach, non-life guard area, no man's land of the beach.
Motion to grant said special event permit.
Second.
Just a question. I mean, of course, I want to support this. We don't have no issue, right, with where they want to have it?
No.
Okay. So we have a motion to second to grant said special event permit. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Does anybody oppose? And the last one is number nineteen, application of for special event permit from Newport County Y M C A Race Four Chase Camp to be held at Third Beach, beginning Tuesday, July fifth, twenty twenty two, to Friday, August twelfth, twenty twenty two, Monday through Friday, nine A. M. to twelve P. M.
Motion to grant said special event permit.
Second.
Again, Sean, no issues with the beach, Third Beach. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Other communication, number twenty, communication of John Segloski, president of Middletown Athletic Boosters, in reference to request for support, Middletown Athletic Boosters Senior Sports Banquet.
Motion to receive said communication.
Second.
We have a motion to second to receive. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion authorize a civic appropriation in the amount of three thousand dollars to be appropriated from the council president's discretionary fund.
Second.
We have a motion to second to grant three thousand dollars in the amount, to authorize a civic appropriation in the amount of three thousand dollars to be appropriated from the council president's discretionary fund. Is there any further discussion?
What's the balance in your discretionary fund?
I don't know. I'll have to ask.
Mark Tangway.
It's in the document.
Well, we'll report that to you.
Okay, we do have it at the end. Okay, maybe you could just write a check and get it over with. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Number twenty one, communication of Tracy Ponce, fundraising committee, looking upwards in reference to requesting support by sponsoring a T sign for its twenty fourth annual golf tournament fundraising.
Motion to receive said communication and sponsor T sign in the amount of one hundred and twenty five dollars to be appropriated from the council president's discretionary fund.
Second.
A motion in the second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Okay, number twenty two, communication of Jay Clement, Bud Sisalini, First Vice President, co-chair and Newport County Grants Golf Tournament Committee in reference to request for support by sponsoring a T sign for the golf tournament.
Motion to receive said communication and sponsor T sign in the amount of one hundred and fifty dollars to be appropriated from the council president's discretionary fund.
Second.
We have a motion to the second for one hundred and fifty dollars to be appropriated from the council president's discretionary fund to sponsor a T sign. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Number twenty three, communication of Nancy Newberry, West House Apartments, requesting the town council to convene a subcommittee regarding the church community housing master plan for the West House Two project.
Motion to receive said communication.
Second.
A motion is second to receive. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So Nancy and Mark would like to speak. Mark, if you'd like to come up, or Nancy, whoever wants to come up first. And how it goes is you have, you have to state your name and address for the record, please.
Mister Chairman and honorable members of the council. My name is Nancy Newberry, and I'm here on behalf of the men and women currently residing at West House. We're fifty-two in number, and our median age is seventy-nine. There are two critical issues that require study and review with respect to the church community housing master plan application. The two issues were given no treatment and no hearing before the planning board because the planning board believed that it was outside their purview as to how management assigns parking spaces or how management elects to operate a facility. Those two questions have to do with insufficient parking spaces and the provision of keys for keyless entry and round the clock access to the people who will be living in West House Two to the West House One building. To hallways, corridors, common rooms. But with respect to the parking, the town zoning professional or team of professionals established that a hundred and four parking spaces were needed for the two apartments that are being called West House One and West House Two. Church community proposed only sixty-one total parking spaces in their master plan application. A major forty-three spaces short of what the professionals said were needed.
Nancy, I'm just going to interrupt you a second. And these are the pictures we have here?
Those are pictures of the parking lot. Last Thursday, residents were directed to move their cars out of the back parking lot up to the front Forest Avenue lot because the annual pardon me, the annual spring cleaning of the back parking lot. So we couldn't have any cars out back. So at five thirty in the morning, Mark Hastings took a picture of the parking lot that showed exactly how many residents have cars. There were thirty-three. You see in the top end of that picture, three blank spaces. Three of those spaces are taken by staff during the week. There are two large trucks and a vehicle by staff members. There are thirty-eight spaces in that front lot, Forest Avenue lot. Thirty-three are taken by residents, three by staff, which leaves only two spaces for visitors, guests, deliveries, meals on wheels, most importantly, all the medical personnel that come into the facility every day in and day out. Anytime you may see two or three different nurses, C N As, physical therapists in the building, helping people to stay in their home rather than have to move to a nursing home or an assisted living facility. As part of their application, church community submitted a picture that showed only nineteen cars in the Forest Avenue lot, and they said that's all seniors needed was nineteen. And the difference between nineteen and sixty-one was forty-three that they said would, would be sufficient for West House Two. West House residents know how to read a sundial, and they looked at that picture that church community submitted, and they saw the shadow of the sun on the building, and they realized that that picture was taken at about eleven o'clock in the morning, which is just about the time that residents read their doctor's appointments, out picking up their prescriptions, doing their grocery shopping, or going to the meal site for an exercise class or lunch. After we complained, the picture was removed from their application, but, but the sixty-one was approved. They had studies, they, they said, and the study was that picture, that photo they used. It was the only study, scientific study they had as to what, how many spaces were needed. Had they really wanted to know what, how many spaces were needed by West House, what's being called West House One, all they had to do was call the office and see how many car registrations were on file, and they would have found that there were thirty-three registrations on file. But the T R C, the Technical Review Committee, accepted their study as legitimate, and they secured approval of the planning board for only sixty-one parking spaces when a hundred and four spaces were the standard.
Nancy, I'm just going to, we have a system where, and I should have said this to the beginning, with latitude, we have five minutes and the light in front of you goes green, yellow, and then red. You're in the red. So I would just ask you to try and wrap it up the best you can, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Parking is the one issue, and we asked, we asked the council to commit a, the reason we were here was to ask the council to create a subcommittee that could look more closely at these two important issues. Maybe recommend, make a recommendation for a modification to the church community housing application before it receives final approval here. So that seniors in the first instance won't have to fight for a parking space every day they leave the building. A major worry of current residents, though, is for personal safety if, if the church community is permitted to give keys or keyless entry to the hallways and corridors and common rooms of West House. We need the subcommittee to take a close look at this problem and to give no sanction to the lunacy of it. Who other people will be living at West House Two? Well, they, who will, who are the ones that will have keys and round the clock access to the rooms and corridors? Christian Belden bragged to anyone who'd listened that he had a long, very long waitlist of applicants for the West House Two property. We called his bluff and filed a Freedom of Information request to see their waitlist, which are public records. Turns out they have no waitlists at all. Church Community Housing intends to pull applicants from their other properties. But there are two groups of income-eligible fifty-five-year-old applicants who will qualify for the West House occupancy. The first group are people still in the workforce, too young to collect social security. The second group is made up of people unable to work due to physical or mental impairments or disabilities such as acute alcoholism, drug dependency, obsessive compulsive disorder, schizophrenia or bipolar disorder. The latter group includes a chronically homeless. These people need affordable housing, but should it be at the expense of the elderly in West House One, which for years has been considered the gold standard in the state of Rhode Island for what, what affordable senior housing ought to be? There are no social service components attached to church community housing at West House Project. Seventy and eighty-year-old residents at West House One are not social workers. They wouldn't recognize a drug deal going down in their corridor or a common room if their life depended on it, and it very, may very well depend on it. It is nothing short of lunacy to mix together mentally disabled with the frail elderly, and an in-depth legislative study by the state of Connecticut clearly established that fact. Phoenix Property Management, a for-profit business out of Warwick, manages West House One on a part-time basis.
Nancy, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up. We're going on eight or ten minutes now, okay?
We don't need a Connecticut study to tell us what problems are waiting for us if, if we mix an elderly population with mentally disabled. We have experts right here in Middletown that can tell you what to expect. Mark Hastings spoke with both experts, and only coincidentally, both of them hail from Connecticut. Mark will tell you of his conversations with Middletown Police Chief William Kueher and Middletown Fire Chief James Peplo, and the council should be alarmed about the comments they each expressed. Both chiefs signed off on the master plan application, but neither had the facts nor knew anything about providing keys and full access to West House One. I thank the council for the opportunity to be heard, and I urge the creation of a subcommittee to take a closer and important look at these very real problems. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Nancy. Appreciate it. Mark, just your name and address for the record, sir.
I'm Mark Hastings, West House One. I've been associated with the West House. I've been associated with the West House for seventeen years. My mother lived there, my closest friend lived there, and now I live there. And I hope to stay there until I'm on the wrong side of the grass. So we have ninety-four percent of the people in that building. Now, I'm trying to, I'm following Nancy. She's giving you a lot of information. The big issue is one building is there, and it has that's forty-nine units in it. Everybody's happy. Everybody's safe. Everybody's concerned that the parking, the reason we gave you the photographs is to show that our parking lot in the front is full. There's no moving their parking, overflow parking to us. The other issue is key access. We have swipe keys. Swipe the key, in you go. Church community wants to give sixty-six people in the other building, when they build it, access to our building twenty-four seven. We have no security cameras. They have a couple of cameras in the front hallway that don't record. They are short forty-two parking spots. Now, we have the fifty-five-year-olds and the seventy-nine-year-olds. I'm the youngest guy there. Right? So you guys could feel my pain, right? This is me bringing it tonight with my jacket.
All right. You're looking sharp, Mark.
Well, when I looked in the mirror, I didn't say the same thing, but. Okay, so we're trying to cut this short, right?
Yes, sir.
So we got fifty-five-year-olds and seventy-nine-year-olds. They're all scared to death. We've got thirteen walkers, eight canes, one wheelchair. They feel safe because they have that, that security of that swipe key. Church community wants to put a breezeway on connected to buildings. I talked to Ron from Planning Board, I don't know his last name. He said that they could take down those breezeways, and they could use the money to, to invest in their own kitchen. They want, the reason they want access is for our kitchen. Now, our kitchen hasn't worked in four months because fire suppression is gone. So they, they pulled the stove out. They're short forty-two parking spaces. Everybody's worried that because they're walkers, where are they going to park when those people come around and park in our lot? Now, we're talking about grandmothers, and now we're talking about great-grandmothers. So I told the chief, the fire, the police chief, I met with him. My kid's a state trooper in Vermont. He says, this is a disaster. These fifty-five-year-old places. Oh, I, I want to back up. We are not trying to block the building. We want the building. We'd be hypocrites if we said we didn't want that building. We want the building. We just want it to be left alone so we have our own fragile community. That's all we're asking for. So if that lot gets filled up by their cars, those, those people have to park down at Job Lot. Can you imagine walkers coming up the hill? The study that Nancy's talking about is this study, which you all got a copy of. It's mixing populations, elderly and disabled houses. This is a study from Connecticut. The new chief knows about this study. He was a former state trooper in Connecticut. The fire chief is from Connecticut. He's aware of this. I gave them both a copy of this. They were never told at the the T C R committee anything about key access or parking, yet church. Church Community keeps saying, well, the chief and the, both chiefs signed off on. It's untrue. They keep telling half-truths and half omissions to get through this permitting process. I'm sorry I'm running late. This is incredibly severe consequences if that access is to that building from there, and we're just praying that you're gonna help us out, and at least get a subcommittee with somebody from the elderly committee. I think you guys have an elderly committee or something like that. If we could get somebody like that on board, that'd be, just help us out. And try to, have them go and look, take another look at this. It's incredibly, for instance, there's a, there's a, there's a vernal pool in the back. Church Community says it's, there's no water in it. I took pictures of it, so I showed, I gave you two sets of pictures of the full parking lot and the vernal pool in the back. They were trying to get away from going to DEM on it, but we called them up and said, you know, they either gonna downsize the building, or take down those two breezeways and add parking along that side, and everybody in this whole complex would be thrilled. So, we're just trying to get you to give us a subcommittee so we can address these facts. There's a lot more to go through, but I got the red light.
You got the red light, sir. So, Sean, little bit unfamiliar territory here. So I don't know if we have the answers tonight. I don't know what jurisdiction we have here, or not. I, I just don't know those, I, I don't know if anybody here knows those answers. Maybe we can get them, I'm sure.
Yeah.
We may not give you answers tonight, but if we don't, we'll try and get you some kind of answer.
We are desperate for help.
But I'm not sure where this is in the process. See, a lot of these things don't even come before us.
Right, that's why we're here.
They go through zoning and, right, so.
But they weren't listening. They kept saying to us at the Planning Board, "It's not in our purview, it's not in our purview." But then again, they said that they, Middletown wanted the project presented to them because they had more control over it. Well, if they have control over it, and they gotta come back to a subcommittee and tell the truth on what's going on and what's the parking issue is, because I tell you right now, parking in this lot is gonna be difficult for you, because they're not gonna walk, I counted it, from their boundary lines to this parking lot, because it's a hole in the, in the wall, I walked over it, it's, it's two-hundred-and-fifty steps. If they can't park it, they gotta park down there, it's a quarter of a mile.
Okay. So Sean, do we have any idea, or Richard, because this is, this is new territory for us?
So it's, it's a private development.
Right.
It's, this is not how, how West House operates, or how they develop their property as an operation, is, is not under our jurisdiction. If they, you know, they, they've, they've developed this business plan where you have a building with an existing population, you have a new building, which, as I understand it, can have fifty-five plus, that, that's their project. So, you know, what, what I think we're hearing tonight is basically the existing tenants, you know, have a dispute with the people who manage the property and where they're headed. I think we can certainly sit down with Christian and talk to him and share the concerns that the, the residents have, but I don't know necessarily that it's appropriate for the council to get involved. If it's a planning or zoning matter, there's, and Attorney Sayer can weigh in on this, there's, there's ways that people can appeal the decisions of the planning board, the zoning board, but I don't hear, that's, that's what's happening right now.
Well, so the issue, the issue I have, and I don't know, again, if it's within our purview, but if, if it's true what Mr. Hastings is saying, that, I'm not saying it's not, I wasn't at the, at the Planning Board meetings.
Right.
For this hearing, is that if, you know, the police chief and the fire chief sign off on something, but they not have all the facts, safety-wise, that bothers me. So I don't know, again, I don't know if that's our purview, I don't know if that's the case or not, that's what the man in front of us is saying tonight.
I, I don't know of where swipe, I, I guess I, I'm hearing the thing about the locks, but I think the real issue is that, what I'm hearing is, they don't want people from the new building to access the new building.
Correct.
It's not, it's not the lock.
And parking.
And parking, the number of parking spaces and allowing people from one building to visit the other. That's, that's what I'm hearing, when you boil it down, the, the.
But wouldn't the, wouldn't the parking spaces be a zoning issue?
I think it's at the planning board, because it's, it's an affordable housing issue, it's at, it follows a different process.
Okay.
So, I, I would, I would need to look at that, I can certainly look at that.
Yeah, I'm not, I hate to say this, because we always wanna help people, I'm not sure if we can or not, but we'll, we'll look into it.
Okay.
That's where we're at with it. Mrs. Santos.
Excuse me. There was a lot of untruths told to the planning board and the zoning board, and what they did is, they, they got all this done in the TRC committee, and then Mr. Belden came in and he put it on the table and said, "This is the way it is." And I had an eighty-three-year-old lady get up and say, you know, "What about the parking? What about this?" He says, "You're just lucky to have a place to live." That's Belden.
Okay, Mrs. Santos.
Thank you, sir. Hello, Mr. Hastings.
Hello, Ms. Santos.
Everybody in this room has either got an elderly parent or their elderly. The folks living in this West House, the first, the front lot, they walk the corridors instead of going out for their exercise. They have a beautiful building. Now, what Mr. Hastings is saying, that the second building, the folks in there are going to be given a swipe key so that they can go through this front building with all these elderly residents, and that's what they are, they're elderly residents, and go through. Mr. Hastings described who's going possibly be living in the second portion. Now, think of this. If you were living there, and, or your mother was living in this home, and she's walking, doing her exercise, and all of a sudden, someone comes through to go to the back, who is maybe disorientated, maybe has some problems, would you want your mother to encounter that person? I think that this has got to be resolved. Maybe it's not a town problem, but it's got to be resolved with the building person before an accident or something worse happens there. They've got a beautiful building, some parts there have to be taken care of.
Right.
So that's all I got to say. We got to take care of our residents.
Okay, Mr. Sayer.
Yes, as, I, I just have to say this, I'm very sympathetic for the things that I've heard tonight with respect to this, but from a legal perspective, there's a developer's rights in this too, and there's a process, there's a unified permitting process that's apparently been undertaken. So I just caution the council in taking any kind of official action that would upset that process. I think that it's perfectly appropriate for Mr. Brown to go contact and, and try to find out more things, but from the council's position, this is really outside, it's more like landlord- tenant situation, and it's, the permitting process is underway, and I would caution you to avoid interfering with that.
Okay. Mrs. Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mark, do they, do you know, I think you indicated that the project has not been through final approval at the planning board yet, is that true?
That's true.
Do you have a date on that?
Not yet. We, we went to DEM, and they said they couldn't come down and examine the, the vernal pool until they got their final permitting. So they haven't got their final permitting, that's why we're here, asking for a subcommittee. Look, this gentleman knows the law, but I also know how to play hardball. If you guys walk this slow and say, "Because we want this," they, they more than willing, more than probably will, will, will buckle under and take the keys away, and the parking issue is just a no-go. These people can't come home at five o'clock at night and drive around, try to find a parking space at seventy-nine years old.
Thank you, Mark.
So, once again, I'm begging you.
So, Mr. Sayer, I, oh, I'm sorry, did, was there, I don't wanna cut you off, Mark.
No, no, I'm fine.
So, Mr. Sayer, I'm, I'm wondering if, I agree with the council president that, I think the issue is not that they're against the project, they made that statement, it's sort of the process that the project went through with information, you know, our TRC meetings, they're recorded, you know, so these, these things can be reviewed, and that maybe decisions were made without full disclosure or full information or understanding, and just so, you know, we have the story straight. I guess my question is, if there are, you know, health, safety, welfare, public health, safety, welfare, that's a phrase, issues that may be brought up, you know, we can, we can nip it in the bud here and see what we can do collaboratively, or if it does go through planning and then zoning, and then it goes through an appeal, what, what good is that? I mean, you're gonna be looking at the same things.
There's an administrative process going on that pursuant to state law and statutes and ordinance, and an administrative process is sort of below the council's jurisdiction, more or less. And so there are avenues of appeal, I, I know this isn't what you wanna hear, but this is the law. And there, there are avenues of appeal of administrative processes that, that can be taken if there are, has been inadequate review or et cetera. So, that's my answer to your question. What, so it doesn't preclude Mr. Brown going out and asking the question and saying, "What's going on here, and, you know, can you make some accommodation if possible?" I mean, I think that's, you know, just as a, as a, just looking into it.
I think that's the best way to go.
But I don't think the council should do anything about this right now.
I think we cannot interfere with the process.
One, one last thing.
Yes, sir.
And it is the last thing. I forget Ron's last name, who's in charge of the planning board.
Wolansky, Mr. Wolansky.
I asked him point-blank at a planning board, would the permitting process be affected at all if they took down the breezeway, which would eliminate the, and give them more parking?
Yep.
And he said no, because he, he said, he didn't, he didn't think, he thought that they would possibly be able to not have to go through permitting again, because the, the use of the building wouldn't change. He worded it quite carefully, but he encouraged me when he said it. But I'm just asking you guys to put a little pressure on them, maybe do a subcommittee, that's what our letter is for. We are trying our best with no money at all.
Right. We probably are not gonna form a subcommittee. What we will do is, we will have Mr. Brown, we'll reach out, he does have a relationship with, we've worked with Church Community over the years, used to be Steve Ostergaie, now it's Christian.
Right. And he, he supposedly is a pretty reasonable person.
So, and that's probably the route we're gonna take, because, you know, according on the advice of our solicitor, we're not gonna, we cannot interfere by law.
Okay.
Although we do wanna help, I don't want you to.
Right.
It's, you know, not passing the buck by no means, but we do have to follow the law. So having said that, Mr. Brown said he's willing to reach out and see what information he can gather, okay?
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it. Okay. And thank you, Nancy. Let's move on to council business number twenty-four. Communication to Vice President Welts in reference to discussion of relocating the sports fields that will be displaced by the Middletown Center and Oliphant Housing Projects.
Motion to receive said communication.
Second.
We have a motion to second to receive, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Vice President.
All right, I put this on here because there's a number of projects going on in town that are good size, and some of them affect sports fields. Mainly, right at the moment, we talked about Futsal, which was going to go at Potsie, now is okayed, at least initially at Oliphant. Oliphant is also being considered for housing, which would eliminate three T-ball fields. The Middletown Center project obviously would consume Potsie Field and a basketball court. So, as a parent of anybody that played sports, unless the town would be able to tell me where those fields are gonna be relocated, I would have a problem with it. So I think that we need to get ahead of that. Everything has a different time, amount of time that it would take. We all know that the drive-in with the multipurpose fields took at least two years before we could fly on it, so there is, there, unless we have green flat space somewhere that I don't know about, we can't just pick up fields and put them there. So we need to think about it ahead of time. So what I'm asking councilors for their input, my idea would be to form some sort of a committee that would take Will Cronin, because he schedules all the sports. I think Mike Stahl would be good, because he maintains all the parks and recreational fields. Open Space and Fields obviously has some, maybe a subcommittee from them, I would, I would volunteer. And at least sit down, get all the pieces together on the puzzle, and think about it ahead of time, especially, and I'll just use Middletown Center as an example. I think it's, there's a lot of good things about the project, we still gotta, still gotta work on it some, but Potsie Field, I think, is the responsibility of the town, and until we can provide a good answer to the residents, you're not gonna get a lot of backing. I think that's on us, and so that's what I wanna do.
Okay. So, any councils have any questions or comments?
I comment. Of course.
This is Flynn.
Well, you know, it's like when you're planning house projects, you, and what Councilor Von Villas always says, you need to know where you're going, right, before you make the plan.
Yep.
And I think that this falls into that category, where if you don't have a definite plan, if the fields would have to be relocated, given a, a particular proposal, then it would be a hard plan to support. I, I have to agree. I, I don't wanna, you know, waste time, money, resources going down a path that doesn't have the end that you desire, or doesn't serve the residents with the amenities that they're accustomed to. So, I, I think I concur with the concept. I'm not sure the, the how to do it, but I think the proposal is, is a fair one that Councilor Welts puts forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Flynn. So, when we did, when we had that, the last field subcommittee, I was on it, and some of the councils are still here, we took the tour of all our fields, you know, because we were hearing that we were short ball fields. We looked at all the town-owned properties, the current fields, and one of the things we did look at and consider, because the West Main Road, Cottington, potential project had been talked about for probably ten years. So, one of the things that came out of there was flag football, because I guess flag football, we were told, I forget the gentleman's name that came before, is a few years back, and said there was, you know, there was a lot more people playing flag football than I ever realized. One of the reasons we built the fields on the old drive-in property was to help accommodate that. That's why they're not lacrosse fields, they're multipurpose fields. So having said that, Councilor Toronto and I attended the opening day Little League this past Saturday. I've never seen so many kids in Little, in Little League, it's just, you know, the numbers were dwindling because of other sports. I mean, I just couldn't believe how many kids are playing baseball again, which was really, really nice to see. So, I know we received an email from Alan Gray about those fields. We do need to do some homework and figure out. We do need to do some homework and figure out where they'll be. But as Council Flynn said about Mrs. Von Villas saying, you got to know where you're going, if the affordable housing, you know, does get approved and as far as dollars-wise for Oliphant School, we're probably three to four, five years out from even putting a shovel in the ground there. So we do have some time, but I think we do need to start looking at it. And there's some other things that the town's working on right now that we can't talk about. We're going to talk about an executive session, hopefully we can talk about it soon, that could potentially maybe alleviate these problems. So, I don't know if that helps or not, but we are at least three years out from having to relocate any of those fields.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Tom, we were, we're both on the Open Space and Fields Committee. I know we put that as a line item on the next agenda to start looking for appropriate places to relocate those fields. So I know that's starting. Now, that doesn't replace your subcommittee where you're asking for, but I agree, I think it's important that we start looking. Why wait? We should be looking for other areas to put this because Oliphant is a prime candidate for affordable housing. And another thing I had asked, and I think they said that they tried to do this, but we don't have a master schedule of all our fields. So, you know, there's, we found out like one of those fields are softball, but they're not really, it's not really thriving. And we're like, okay, well, it's not thriving, well, let's, what can we do to get it thriving again, one? And where could we relocate that? And do we have a scheduling system that says this field's used from this time to this time and we can squeeze somebody in there? So I think we have options to look at some things. And I think it will be a group of folks that can look at it and try to figure out what's the best way to utilize our fields. Because we have invested a lot in our fields and I think we can do it.
Okay. Vice President.
So I appreciate the input. However, I think that we need to be more proactive and sit down, at least look at the options and bring some more people into the, into the talk so that we have other ideas. I would hate to see a knee-jerk reaction in that Potsie Field goes, what are we going to do? Because West Main Road is on a quicker trajectory if it goes through than three to five years. So, you know, it, you can't just plunk down a field if it does not exist, if we do not have a space. Even if we have the space, but it's not flat grass, it requires work. We need to think about that. And now that we have, a phrase you like to use, a number of moving pieces here.
We do.
Maybe we can be more efficient. Maybe we look at the whole town, all the sports and say, you know what, maybe we don't need that softball field, maybe we need, all we have to do is this. But I think we should, even if nothing happens for a year, at least we have a plan rather than wait until we get pushed into a corner.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
And I just want to reiterate that sense of urgency. I think the concept is to, especially since the affordable housing application is supposed to go in in December, the Middletown Center is actively rolling along. And I think that the, the concept is to identify and have that relocation spot before anything is given final approval. So I think that there's a sense of urgency that, you know, I would like to have those answers before we take any definitive votes.
No, and I agree and I understand, but there's some other moving pieces right now that we cannot talk about.
Yeah.
And so, once we can, I think we can really move on it fairly quickly.
As long as it's within the timeframe of these other projects, that's great.
So do you want to, you want to, you want to make a subcommittee tonight? Is that what you want to do? Or do you want to refer to?
I don't necessarily need to do it. Mr. President, can I just, one thing I'd add.
Mr. Brown.
I'm sorry, I'm inviting myself to the conversation.
You're always welcome, sir.
So, you had mentioned, when the council created the subcommittee, I just wanted to remind you that there was a lot of animosity between Open Space and the committee that was formed by the council because the Open Space Committee wanted to be involved. They felt that that was their role. So, just, I think there is an opportunity to use the existing committee, you know, and focus our resources that way, just to consider that. Because again, that was a source of.
You're right, I do remember that. I'm glad you reminded me of that.
Concern.
Are you okay with that? That we want to start?
And I think we can add people to Open Space and Resources.
Yeah, and even if there ends up being a subcommittee, maybe some of the folks from the Open Space and Field could be on that. Fair enough?
Good.
Excellent.
And just one other note, so we are using the town's website, there is a module for scheduling fields, so not only would you schedule a field online, but then you would see the field availability. Mr. Cronin's working on that. I need him to finish the bid for the trash program. But once we're through with that, we'll be able, I think, to launch basically that online scheduling capability that Councilor Toronto mentioned.
Yeah.
So I think we're ready to go with that.
Excellent. Okay. Satisfied for this tonight?
Yeah, for now.
Excellent, okay.
He'll be back.
Thank you, Vice President. Let's move on to number twenty-five, which a lot of people here for this evening is the memorandum of Vice President Welts and Council Flynn in reference to short-term rental growth plan.
Motion to receive said memorandum.
Second.
We have a motion to second to receive. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, yes, sir.
I recuse myself.
All right, so Council Clerk, please note that Council Toronto is going to recuse himself and see the clerk to fill out the form, please, so that it gets to.
Back in about an hour.
The F. Yeah.
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 President?
Yes, sir.
Since I'm here, in Peter Regan's behalf as an assistant solicitor, I'm also am going to recuse myself. And I think there's a solicitor.
Is Marissa here?
Here. She is. She's hiding.
Oh, that was you behind the TV. Okay, thank you, Mr. Sayer. I would just, probably, I would just ask that tonight, folks, you've always been reasonable in the past, we just maintain, you know, you have your five minutes to speak and we'll try and, you know, and try not be as redundant as possible. You bring up new facts, we're always, always willing to listen and try and get this thing right. So, having said that, there's a number of folks that would like to talk on this and we're just going to, I'm just going to take them in the order that I have them, okay? So, I have, first I have J.C. Redford.
Right out of the gate.
Right out of the gate.
A lot of people.
J.C., just your, just your name and address for the record, please.
No, no pressure though, right? I don't think I've seen this many people in here in a long time.
That's okay. Listen, just, it's only us you're talking to.
Thanks.
We're just regular people that do the same thing you guys do every day.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay.
James Redford, 275 Green End Avenue. You guys all know me, Mr. Brown, you know me. I'm going to take a little bit of a different tact tonight. So, Mr. President, last week, or last month, in the last council meeting, you spoke about your experience with an STR and you said that, you know, you had a conversation with the owner of your property. And I just want to be clear that sixteen years ago, I tried to have a conversation with the owner of the property next to me. He stood in my third floor bedroom in the middle of the night while people were doing backflips off the second floor roof deck and, because I wanted him to see the nuisance I was dealing with. And the response I got was, deal with it, it's a business. Sixteen years later, I'm still dealing with it. And I'm dealing with it because the law in Middletown allows it. Since that meeting sixteen years ago, I've spoken with every leader in this town. The nuisance does not stop. People think I am a curmudgeon who is just against short-term rentals for absolutely no reason, but that is far from the truth. I am against short-term rentals because, and I gave this to you this week, Mr. President, this is the list of police reports I have from 2007 to 11 and 2013 to 16. This is extensive. The police report stopped after 2016 because I, like many other residents, simply stopped calling. My complaints, my requests for help fell on deaf ears. Last week as well, Mr. President, you mentioned that you had a conversation with somebody that wanted to buy a new home and get away from a short-term rental. And just so everybody knows, that was me. I told you that. And my wife and I put a bid in, and we have five years left on our mortgage. We put a bid in on a house on Golden Rod or in the Golden Rod neighborhood. Eight months ago, houses in that development were selling for $600,000. The house that we put a bid in on was listed at 750 and it sold for north of $800,000. This is going on because short-term rental investors are buying up property and they are taking affordable way, housing away from residents who want to live here. Mr. Brown said some interesting things after your statement last week. The first thing he said is, we can't fix me being outbid, but you can, Mr. Brown, because you can fix the law. You can stop enabling institutional investors to buy investments in residential areas. And this, the second.
John, we're just, we're just going to.
Well, the only thing I want to just comment on, I think whatever quotes are coming out.
I listened to them.
They need to be in context, so.
That's.
Okay. I think they're being used for Mr. Redford.
Just so you know, J.C., you have to address us, you cannot address Mr. Brown.
I was addressing you regarding his comments. So, but the fact remains is when a law doesn't work, you have the ability to change it. You, as the council, have the ability to change it. It happens to tax law, it happens to immigration law. It happened during the Vietnam draft when people got drafted and said, what is this? I can go to Vietnam and die for my country, but I can't walk into a bar and drink a beer? Laws change when they don't work, okay? The next thing I'm going to do, and I know I'm running up short on time here, everybody loves to come up here and they like to talk about data. And a lot of people like to spout off that, oh, we only get one or two complaints a year, or I'm sorry, a week. And I think that's not true. And I think that because I call the police once or twice a week and nothing happens. So, all of these people in here, raise your hands. Who lives there for short-term rental?
J.C., that's, that's.
It's not, it's been tormented.
J.C., you have to address us.
Who is, who can, raise your hand if you're tormented by a short-term rental. And you've called the police and they've done nothing. There's some data for you, Mr. Brown. There's a lot of people here who are tormented and you have let this go on for far too long. I'd ask the question, what is a short-term rental is defined by zoning. Is it a hotel or a motel? The Strom people will tell you it's not. Maybe that's because hotels and motels are expressly forbidden in residential areas. Is it a dormitory? Those are not allowed either. But what's interesting is that if you read section 602 of the zoning ordinance, the language is very clear. Any uses not explicitly stated in the zoning ordinance are not permitted within Middletown. Based on that, I challenge you to do the right thing tonight. To tell the people that just raised their hands that those tax-paying residents, the people that fill up their gas tank at Johnny's in January, the people that eat lunch at the Atlantic Grill in January, the people that live here all year round and pay taxes, are more important to you as elected officials than the people who come here from New York, New Jersey, Connecticut, wherever they come from. And they get drunk, they have obnoxious parties right next door to these people. I challenge you to do the right thing tonight for the residents of Middletown because thus far, you have failed. The law has failed us as residents. My final point, which I think is very interesting, is you never hear anybody come up here and say, I live next door to a short-term rental hotel and I love it. The only people who are in favor of these are the people who are gaining wealth off of the backs of tax-paying residents and it's not right. I ask you tonight to do the right thing and to change the laws in Middletown like Newport did, to enable everybody that raised their hand to have some peace and quiet in their homes. Because after sixteen years of it being taken from me, it is time for something to change. Thank you.
Thank you, J.C. Okay, thank you, J.C. Barry Doyle.
Good evening to the Town Council. My name is Barry Doyle, 479 Woolcott Avenue. I'd like to address a few points that came out of the April eighteenth Town Council meeting first, because it frames up what my topic is, the short-term rental party houses, and that's my issue. Mr. Rodriguez, just like you did, as J.C. stated, I'd love to be able to walk over and have a chat with my adjacent owner, but he lives 400 miles away. And so it's not that easy. Many people in this room have a similar problem where the owner's out of town, out of state, or the property is owned by an LLC. So there's no way of knowing who to contact typically. So we're relying upon the town to protect our rights and thereby our quality of life. Regarding the recent Newport Daily News article, just one thing I want to point out about that as far as there was mentioning about the one to two calls per week during 2021. The problem property near me has five adjacent families who get impacted whenever there's issues at this particular property. And for their own valid reasons, they're either unwilling or unable to make calls and complain. Yet I know through conversations with them that they're, you know, they're adversely impacted and they're as frustrated as I am. So this is, you know, five families impacted on every complaint. So you have to assume that a complaint based on density is affecting multiple households. You can't just simply look at one call log and assume it's just one person making a one-off call. Other people simply are unwilling or unable to make that call. Regarding Strom, Mr. Amrath Leo, regarding your comments on the eighteenth, I applaud you, you know, for getting together and forming a lobby group, that's great. It was mentioned, and I'm paraphrasing here, that short-term rentals are good for the town's economy and in general, short-term rentals and Strom members are respectful and part of the community fabric. Regarding being good for the economy, a simple request, can, do we have a study, something prove that out? If there is a study, hopefully it lays out all the cost, impact on housing stock and the quality of life impacts that are caused by short-term rentals. And regarding being good neighbors, a few days ago, I ran a VRBO search for the weekend in October this year for six guests in Middletown. I came back with sixty-seven results. Of those sixty-seven, forty-two were advertising, forty-two for over two people per bedroom, which violates section 98 dot zero nine regarding occupancy limits. That's a sixty-three percent hit rate that are not complying and overpacking their hotels with guests. Going further, there's six operators that have two properties that are doing this. So I wonder how many of those people are members of Strom that are supporting the town's best interest here. And it's known the town is not monitoring this and therefore there's zero downside to ignoring this headcount ordinance. And this becomes a safety issue when you overload houses like that. And I have the details if anybody wants to see them as far as the research that I did. Some folks actually have addressed Town Council in the past, advocating to maintain the status quo. I'm bringing these points forward to show the underlying problem is twofold. Operators in general ignoring the rules because it's a history of little to no enforcement. Short-term rental operators are conditioned to know there's no real threat of repercussion. There's a foundational problem that needs to be reset. And what should really be done here, if the owner's not living in the rental, it should be treated as what it is, a hotel in a residential zone. This should require a special use permit and regulate it like any other hotel. Number two, permits limited to one person or entity, period. No person, household, family, or business should be able to create and run an absentee short-term rental empire. And finally, incidents of properties need to be tracked and too many violations should expose the operator to a loss of privilege. And again, I use the word privilege, this should be treated as a regulated privilege, not a right, by simply writing a check every year. If the town's branches can't get together and develop the executive strategy on regulation and enforcement, the town should go the way of Newport and prohibit all short-term rentals in residential zones. My final thought, the original Airbnb model was one where homeowners, called a host, would rent space in their homes to travelers. The pitch for the host, which by name implies living on site, was supplemental income, not this current-day perversion of commercial hotels operating in residential zones with little oversight. Thank you all for your time this evening.
Barry.
Yes.
Could you provide us, or provide the, the data? I'd like to see your research, what you did.
Yeah, absolutely. Who should I send it to, the council or?
You can send it to Town Clerk.
We got Wendy, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, David Ditman.
Hi, my name is Dave Ditman, 44 Ocean View Drive. Um, I'm gonna take about two minutes and that's about it. Um, I had a short-term rental three years, or more than three years ago, for, for three years, from, uh, 2015 to 18. So I experienced all the pros and cons of, of short-term rentals. I manag- I'm not gonna take you through all the details, but I managed it. Uh, I met the people coming in, I set the rules. They signed a legal document saying these are the rules. And if they broke those rules, they were liable. Um, I also, I also showed them around the place. And then after they rented the place, I met them the day they were leaving. And, uh, before I would authorize their reimbursement of their deposit, um, I'd check out the houses, et cetera, et cetera. But anyway, um, in my opinion, the regulation of this industry, if we keep this industry in Middletown, the regulation is everything. And I don't know if this is regulate, regulatable, I can only know if I can say it, but, um, but that's the thing that kind of worries me. However, we're headed into this summer, we have a four-pronged approach with statewide. Um, we have, let me read this here, I'm sorry. Uh, the statewide registry is being revised, updated, uh, short-term rental ordinance, hiring additional zoning personnel, and then the police are hiring these summer interns. I hear all this, I'm hoping it will work. Um, I think of the people that live next to these short-term rentals or in these properties or on these streets. Um, I live on Ocean View Drive. When I did my short-term rentals, excuse me, this way, uh, my short-term rentals, um, I was very aware of all my neighbors and I wanted to make sure that the people in my, that were renting were not bad. I had a couple of bad situations and I was over there. All the bad situations happened from 12:00 midnight to 6:00 in the morning. My question is, with this whole game plan going into this summer, can we, what are we gonna do from 12:00 midnight to 6:00 in the morning? Is there a way to regulate that? Anyway, that's it, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, sir.
Joanne Thornton.
Hi, I'm, uh, Joanne Thornton. I live at 28 JH Dwyer Drive. And I have a nightmare living next door to me. Um, came to the town about six years ago, 2016, when the property changed hands. And it then became a short-term, uh, rental. Um, I, when I came to the town, uh, I asked for some assistance and I was told that without knowing the property owner's name, the town was unable to help me. That if I had an issue, I needed to report it to the police, which, um, I now have them on speed dial, just in case anybody wants to know. Um, the police always came, they were, they were polite, they were prompt, they took care of whatever. Shut them down, however, um, more than once, um, after the police left, renters would go inside, maybe 10, 15, 20 minutes, and they're back outside. This is a property that's on a hill, it's like living in an amphitheater. I can hear everyday normal conversation from their backyard. When they come back from Newport after spending a night out and they're drunk and tanked up or whatever else they're on, the outdoor theater goes on, the Bose speakers go full tilt, there's basketball games, there's shouting, there's screaming. One of my neighbors was recovering from a stroke during that time. And it's just, I, I pray for rain every Wednesday in the summer so that they won't be outside. Something has to be done. We've been residents of New, of Middletown here for over 30 years. We've never had a problem with any of our neighbors, particularly that house. We've had, um, single mothers with teenage boys, you never heard them. Didn't even know they were there. We had young couples with small children, we had people with no children. Until this short-term rental, Airbnb, whatever you want to label it, moved in, um, life as we know it is over. We pay our taxes on time, we'd like this to stop. I'm begging the council to take some swift action, do what you have to do, follow Newport's lead. Now that, um, my fear is now that Newport has shut the door on this, you know, when you tear down a slum, the rats are gonna go somewhere. They're going to come to Middletown. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Mr. Bagwell, would you like the mic to you? Okay.
John Bagwell from, uh, 587 Talkabout Avenue, Middletown. Um, I sent the council, everybody in the council on Friday evening, a memorandum outlining three issues and my suggested approach. And basically, what I'm proposing is something that's proactive and benign with respect to those who have short-term rentals now. But it's positive for the town. Because, uh, and you will see why. First of all, why should it be pro- why should you be proactive? Why is it time to act, not study? And the answer is because you've heard it from, even from the, you've heard it from some of the people tonight. But more importantly, Newport, the fact that they have put restrictions on new, on short-term rentals, short-term rental investors will be moving even more aggressively toward Middletown. Now, my comments tonight are not directed toward people like David Ditman, who's a homeowner occupied, his home is, his, his short-term rental was his principal residence. My comments are directed toward investor-owned short-term rentals. And they are the majority of these, roughly according to, uh, uh, Joe Emanuel, the new fellow, uh, working at the zoning department. They're about 60% of the total S, uh, short-term rentals. So what's the first issue? Density of investor-owned short-term rentals in residential neighborhoods. I believe the density of these short-term rentals can have a negative impact on the residential na- nature of a neighborhood. In a moment, I'll give you my proposal based upon work done by another co- community similar to ours. The most recent map showing the location of every S short-term rental, investor occupied, reveals a significant density to the east. I had said Reservoir Avenue, actually it's the east of Walcott Avenue. But that's where they are. If you were investing in a short-term rental, why would you want to have one in East Main Road? They're in the, uh, Eastern Point area to the ocean side of Walcott Avenue. That's where most of them are. Second issue is the impact of investor-owned short-term rentals on the availability and the affordability of housing for those who would like to make Middletown their home. You heard JC talk about the impact of this. I've talked to brokers and, and I see ads for incredibly high prices. I said, "Who would buy these?" Somebody buying a short-term rental, he said, "That's our market." And the third thing is the tax, so the affordability, first of all, affordability is, uh, as, as short-term, the market, the, the economic value of a short-term rental owner is gonna be different than the economic value of somebody who's buying a house. And it's gonna be higher. And the third is, every, every house that goes from somebody owning and living here to become a short-term rental reduces the market by one. So I'm, at the third, and so what I'm proposing is, as far as density, I found that Douglas County, Nevada, near Lake Tahoe, is a similar, a community similar to ours, or under the impact of, of a recreational area. And they've enacted an ordinance to limit the growth of what they call vacation home rentals. This includes, included a neighborhood density limit. Quoting from the ordinance, "In order to preserve the residential nature of communities, no community shall have more than 15% short-term rentals in single-family communities and 20% in tourist or multifamily communities." And I don't think we have one of those. I'm talking about the single-family community that's to the east of Walcott Avenue. Generally, I looked at that and it's probably close to 20%. So I would hope the town council tonight would act and say, 15%. 15%, it was a figure that was developed by Douglas County after some thorough studies as to what, when does the percentage begin to impact a neighborhood's quality. And I think, secondly, I'd recommend a limit on the number. We have roughly somewhere between 250, uh, investor-owned short-term rentals in town. So I don't think we have an exact count at this point. I'd recommend 300. So no more short-term rentals in the, to the east of Walcott Avenue. We're probably already over 15%. But you can still have short-term rentals in town if you want to have one in, in another area. So those are my recommendations. And I think the time for the councils, no more studies, let's adopt these, let's move forward. You've heard about the complaints, so let's slow down the development of short, of investor-owned short-term rentals. And, uh, I'm watching my clock, I've got 12 seconds left, so, uh, I'll finish my-
You did a fantastic job, Mr. Bagwell.
Anyway.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Rob Conerni.
Rob Conerni, Heinren Fu Park. So we now have a map showing the density of STRs in Middletown. I would like to thank councilors Flynn and Welch for continuing to focus on this matter. And looking at this map, there can be no doubt that STRs have had an impact on the quality of life in Middletown. Quality of life in family-first Middletown. Fully one in five homes in Eastern's Point have some form of short-term rental activity. 20%, one in five, I did the, the count. Uh, this 20% number is not only short-term rental activity, i- is only short-term rental activity, and it does not include property that is not signed up yet for the season, and it doesn't include unregistered short-term rental activity that we know occurs. Most of it is done on a week, a weekly basis or a weekend basis. So you have a new crew coming in every week. And that's what some of the comments you're hearing. Uh, the impact cannot be measured in the number of trouble cause, calls recorded as the town implied at the last meeting. In the first place, many residents have simply given up calling for various reasons that I won't get into. In the second place, residents should not have to bear the burden of reporting STR violations regarding businesses that they do not own and operate. It's not our job. And lastly, many impacts, while they may not be violating any ordinance or law, they are nonetheless incompatible with the expected residential community living in family-first Middletown. Also not considered by the town is the fact that the vast majority of these STRs, the blue ones on this map, are non, uh, non-owner occupied, meaning that they are not available to families desiring to live and work in family-first Middletown. Uh, they're not gonna live and work here, they're not gonna support the economy year-round, and they're not gonna support the school systems and the other things that go into making a vibrant community. They're simply weekend rental houses. So the density of STR activity in Eastern's Point is now 20%. Neighboring Newport has passed an ordinance which prohibits property owners in Newport's residential zones from renting properties for less than 30 days unless they are serving as a primary residence. There can be no doubt that this is gonna drive an increase in investment in Middletown. We are walking distance for downtown Newport. So the investors that can't do business there are gonna move here. You can already see it happening. Um, my question to the town council tonight is, do you believe that 20% STR activity is an acceptable number? What would you like it to be? Would you like it to be zero, as Newport has done? Would you like it to be 30%, 40%, or 100%? This is a question I pose to you. It is abundantly clear which direction this is going to go if you do nothing. The town should be exploring what Newport has done as well as looking at what other communities across the country have done, such as John Bagwell mentioned. In no case should STR activity be grandfathered in, in perpetuity. For example, you could have STR day, STRs for under 30 days allowed to operate on a permit-only basis. Obtaining a, an STR permit is not a right. The town reserves the right to determine which property locations are appropriate and when the permit may be revoked, revoked or denied. There's a cap on the total number of permits available and the maximum number of permits that may be issued in any given neighborhood. So you set a cap for different neighborhoods and that's all you're gonna give out. Uh, permits are renewed annually on a lottery basis, up to the number of permits allowed. And once you hit the number of permits allowed, you go on a waiting list. Okay, there's no, there's no right to do STR business in the residential area. There should not be. Uh, and lastly, permits do not convey with the sale of the property. So these are all things that can be done, very easy, they've been done elsewhere. Uh, but it's pretty clear, if you do nothing, it's pretty obvious what's gonna happen if you do nothing. 20% is gonna become 30%, is gonna become 50%. And I'll be got, I'll be one of the guys doing it because the neighborhood will be gone. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Uh, Nick Pacianos.
Nick Pacianos, to Tony Lynn Terrace. Um, I'm, just wanted to mirror, uh, some of the comments that were made tonight. I am in agreement that a limit needs to be established for non-resident short-term rentals. If unchecked, we could be faced in a future hotel neighborhood whose owners have no stake in the town of Middletown. At the same time, I'd like to voice that I am, um, in acceptance of owner-occupied short-term rentals. I think they make sense and you've got, um, well, the, the owners are on premise, so there's, they've got skin in the game. And they care. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Jack Corey.
How are you? My name is Jack Corey, uh, 8 Christine Road in Middletown.
Hi, Jack.
I just wanted to say, I want to speak from my own experience. Uh, I just moved to Middletown in November from Newport. I was in Newport for the last 10 years. We moved here because the street turned into all short-term rentals and Airbnbs. And it was, it was horrible. And it's, it's up to you to stop that from following me into Middletown. Uh, there would be cars parked in my driveway in the morning, we called the police. Uh, someone sleeping on my front porch who got in a fight with their wife that they were in an Airbnb with across the street. Uh, what happened last year was a company from Massachusetts bought two houses right across the street from us on Dixon Street. Throughout the, the full-time tenants that were there renovated the two houses into five short-term rentals. And it was just a constant, a constant battle with, uh, trash and, uh, parties at night, and it was just, it was horrible for me and my family to live there. And that's why we moved. Uh, the final straw was, excuse me, the final straw was me speaking to the property manager of the new property and telling them that I'm the one that's calling zoning every day and I call the police every night, someone does something wrong in here. And they said they made $1,000 a night per unit. The fines are nowhere near any of that. They're certainly gonna make out no matter how many times I call. And we decided to just pack up the family and move here to Middletown. So that's all I wanted to say, it's-
Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Amy Rigerio. Amy Rigerio.
Hi, Amy.
Hi, good evening.
How are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Good, good, thanks. Haven't seen you in years.
I know, yeah. I'm still here. Thanks for the opportunity to talk about this tonight. I'm here to talk about the short-term rental. JC and I are neighbors, and I have been a lifelong resident of Middletown, as has my mother, as were my grandparents. And in fact, my children and I are, my children are the fifth generation to live on our family property. And we have seen generations of progress on our street. Some of it has been really beneficial and others not. As a family, we have poured into this community through work and service for decades. Our neighborhood, which is, you know, the Green End Valley area, are long-term. They are families, they are young professionals, they are retirees. We take pride in our homes and our land. We are not about wild parties all hours of the night, drunk screaming, increased traffic, public urination, increased trash, and the like. I live about 150 yards from the upstairs deck of this house, and all summer long, I just hope the wind isn't carrying the sound in our direction. But actually, I can't keep my windows open at all in the summer because all I hear is the noise from the house. And my children and I are, you know, attempting to sleep. We know what bars they went to, we know who hooked up with who, which girls are fighting over some random guy, and all sorts of information that we shouldn't know and quite frankly could care less about. It is disruptive at all times of the day and night. It has become a quality-of-life issue, not only for me, but for my retired parents, who have worked their entire lives to maintain our family plot of land. Moreover, the constant changeover of renters means we never know how long people are staying and who they are. That is incredibly concerning to us because it could be, you know, a group of sorority girls, it could be a knitting club, it could be something far worse than that. Additionally, we are very concerned that as this continues, that the home directly next to us will be sold, and who's to say with no regulations, it will not be rented to another, it will not become another party house. I'm all for people making a living and making use of their space. There needs to be stricter guidelines that are enforced. For many years, my parents operated a short-term rental as a means of income and support in their retirement, but they lived next door to the property, and we addressed issues day and night as they occurred. We shouldn't have to call the police well into the night to complain and not have follow-up, and it's not that there's no follow-up as a fault of the police, it's because there's nothing for them to follow up with. So why are the consequences for the owners of these homes that are such a nightmare? Why are there no consequences for these owners? For all the issues that have happened at this particular house, no one at any time has asked my family or any of our neighbors what's going on. With the number of calls that I know JC has made, the number of calls that we have made, it has been very short-sighted of the town to say that there are no issues with short-term rentals, when they have not even asked the people who are living around them. I can't express adequately the disruption that this causes us as a multi-generational family living on this property. Thanks.
Thank you, Amy. Kathleen Schaefer.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Schaefer, and I live at 6 Renfrew Park. My extended family has resided in Renfrew Park for over 80 years. I remember as a child visiting during the summer with my grandmother. It was a serene retreat, and I thought it was the most perfect place in the whole world. Those fond memories brought me back here almost three years ago with the intention of our home becoming a part of my family legacy in Renfrew Park for our children and grandchildren to enjoy. My husband and I moved here in 2019. We'd spent the better part of the previous 20 years raising our two children in Coronado, California, while he served as a physician in the U.S. Navy. Our new neighbors in the park were also happy and relieved to hear that we would not be using our house as a short-term rental as the previous owners had done. They described what they had been subjected to over the past few years to include excessive noise, increased traffic, and parking problems, littering, drunken partying, and a general disregard for neighbors. Enjoyment of their own property, as well as their overall quality of life, was negatively impacted. In fact, despite not having AC, we've had to close our windows at night due to loud music coming from nearby short-term rental properties on multiple occasions over the past two summers. We watched our previous community deal with increasing issues surrounding short-term rentals. Coronado adopted a 25-night minimum property rental restriction, which all but eliminated problems associated with short-term rentals. Those same properties are still in high demand and fetch monthly rents in line with short-term rental prices. Middletown should not be allowed, excuse me, Middletown should not allow non-owner-occupied short-term rentals in residential zones. Non-owner-occupied short-term rental properties operate as businesses, and as such, they should not be permitted to operate in residential zones. The short-term rental properties are not our neighbors. Their primary function is to generate as much revenue as possible. They are not concerned about their impact on the surrounding communities. The issue of short-term rentals is being addressed all over the nation, as local governments are playing catch-up to enact regulations to protect their communities. Middletown should act to mirror Newport's new ordinance regarding short-term rentals as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Leon Amorant.
Good evening, again. We're back here talking about this again. It hasn't even been a summer. This new ordinance was passed, sorry, Leon Amorant, 60 Island Drive. The new ordinance was just passed. We just went through, last year, Councillor Von Villis, Councillor Logan, Councillor Welch. We went through this long exhaustive process with the attorney, with Sean Brown, with the resources in town. We went through it all. We collected all the data, we looked at the historical information. The town made a decision, the town put a policy in place, and the policy is being implemented. We haven't even gone through a full summer yet with the new ordinance, and we're already talking about changing the plan, changing the strategy. I don't get it. A few people are complaining. I empathize with all that. If that's happening, we have a plan in place to address these problems. Let's go through a summer, let's see if these are accurate complaints. There's a lot of information. I've been doing my research. You all know that. I've been asking the town for data, all sorts of data. I've been getting a lot of it, there's some that I haven't gotten. I'm still asking for it. I sent you all this, I'd like the opportunity to go through these facts, you know, that are, you know, that I've analyzed here, through my analysis. So I'm just going to go through, it's a bullet list. I hope I have enough time. So there have been efforts at both the state and local level, as we all know. Rhode Island now has a statewide registry that will require short-term rentals to register with the Division of Business Regulation to be listed on any online platform. Middletown updated their STR ordinance, which will be in effect this summer. Middletown has a zoning resource specifically hired to manage short-term rentals. That zoning resource should be reaching out to these residents and neighbors and asking what's going on, and maybe even mediating between the residents and the short-term rental property owners. If people aren't managing their rental properties correctly, like any property, that should be addressed. I think everyone is in agreement there. There are some interns that are hired. Short-term rental registration compliance is up because of the resources that have been put in place here, and there's a better tracking system for complaints. Onto complaints. The data that I received, they were regarding noise, which I think is the biggest issue. There were 29 complaints, and one ended in a citation. Again, data that I have shows as of March 25, 306 short-term rentals in town. If those host an average of 20 bookings a year, that's about 6,000 stays. One noise citation out of 6,000 is pretty good. So there's an online complaint system called See Click Fix. Looked deeply into that data as well. Eighty-three complaints logged into the system associated with short-term rentals. Of those 83, 59 of them came from a single account, one person. That's a manipulation of the See Click Fix system. One person is going around with the list of short-term rental addresses because they don't like them, and filing complaints on rental properties that they're not even a neighbor of. That's a fact, 100%, confirmed by the town. That's a problem, and that needs to be looked into, and it's being done anonymously, under the cover of anonymity. That needs to stop because it creates an opportunity for manipulating the data. If someone has a complaint, they should not be anonymous. Of those 83, two are for noise. Sean Brown stated that he received a couple calls a week in relation to registered short-term rentals, which is consistent with the data. Also, another good point. A lot of these complaints, while they're at short-term rental addresses, they're not all associated with short-term rental leases. A lot of these properties do convert to military and salve rentals during the off-season, not the non-summer season. Those complaints go in the system, and they're attributed to short-term rentals, but they're not short-term rental complaints. The garbage complaints, that could be salve, a lot of times it is. Salve Regina, you know, students, I would say, are a lot more disruptive potentially than families visiting here with their kids. All these facts prove that Middletown officials are correct in stating that short-term rentals in Middletown are being managed well, complaints are rare, and Middletown does not have a general issue with short-term rentals. Housing and affordability, a lot of research there. Three hundred and six rental properties in Middletown represents approximately 6% of the total housing stock of 5,000-plus homes. Six percent. Over the past four years, according to MLS, 573 properties were sold in Middletown. Of those 573, 43 of them are registered short-term rentals. Seven and a half percent, which means 530 properties were not short-term rentals. The median sale price, this is good, median sale price of the 43 short-term rentals over those four years was $444,000. The median sale price of all 573 homes, the total cohort, was $438,000. So about the same. So the narrative that housing prices have become inflated due to short-term rentals is inaccurate based on these numbers. By the way, the averages are completely opposite. The average of the 573 homes sold was 644,000. The average of the 43 short-term rental properties of those 573, $458,000, almost a $200,000 less than the other properties sold in Middletown. There are some high-value properties in Middletown, Indian Avenue, and there are some low-value properties, but the averages and everything else does not indicate a significant effect that short-term rentals are having on the price.
Leon, you've been in red for a few minutes now.
I know. I get it. And that's also indicative of other widespread studies that have been done on this. And another point to that, Portsmouth is our neighbor to the north, they don't have a short-term rental dynamic there. Their affordability is almost worse than ours is. That's happening there as well. So to pin this affordability conversation on short-term rentals is misguided and it's inaccurate. I'm sorry, that's just the fact. History of short-term rentals in Middletown. I'm almost done. Middletown has been a summer destination for travelers since at least the late 1800s. That's a fact, especially particularly in Easton's Point. The nature of travel has also changed. Tourists with families are looking to stay in houses. This is how we all travel now, a lot of us do. And if we were to limit or reduce that opportunity for travelers, they're not coming here. They're going to find other coastal communities. So, right, good, he says. Some people just don't like tourists. And this is the conversation. They don't like tourists here. Final set of facts, if I can just have another minute. The economic benefit to Middletown. Tourism is a large part of the economy here. Everyone knows that. It's actually called out in the comprehensive plan, and it states that tourism is a major multiplier in the local economy, and housing and lodging is one of the seven indexes in the comprehensive plan that they call out. As I mentioned, Middletown's competing for tourists with other coastal communities. Short-term rentals consist of roughly half of the lodging stock in Middletown. If we were to remove this stock, businesses will suffer tremendously. They might not even be viable, especially in the Atlantic Beach District. There's business owners that survive on the summer. My family owns businesses down there. Yes, the locals, we cater to the locals and everything else, but you take the summer clientele away, it's a death blow to these businesses. Trust me. That's from experience. In addition, that's not even including the lodging and tax revenues, the portion of the sales tax and food beverage revenues that come from the guest daily spending, which is significant. And also, I mean, these properties are well-managed, they rely on local contractors, landscapers, cleaning services, carpenters, painters. Property management, last point.
I don't want to cut you off. So wrap it up, please. It's the last time I'm going to ask you, okay?
And the tax revenues.
I want to make sure we've cleared everybody.
I'm just, I just want to reiterate-
I understand.
-that we're not Newport. We've taken a more methodical approach to what Newport's doing, and we always do, and I commend this council for that. And I'd like this conversation, if it's to continue, I'd like the subcommittee, I would request that the subcommittee form again, and you get the public involved again.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Guys, hang on, ma'am. I know, but you were commenting when he was talking as well. Okay. Okay. All right. All right. So David Rushlow.
My name is David Rushlow. I live at 32 Ellery Avenue, North Town, Rhode Island. I had a prepared statement, but I'm not going to even use that right now. My thing is, is I am a short-term owner, and I rent. I have three colleges on my site. I've worked hard, I've been there for 20 years. And one thing I did when I first went there was, there's two things I had to do, two things was my priority. One is I know I have rental property, that's why I bought it, was respect my neighbors. That was my first thing. Respect my neighbors and show them every consideration possible for them. And that's what I've done in 20 years, and I've worked hard. I went up before, I used to work up in Wachusett, when I do all my projects up there. I used to drive down here and get here at 5:00. I'd work till 3:00 in the morning, grab two hours' sleep, and head back up there to work. This thing right now is not something that just came up yesterday. This did not come up a year ago. This did not come up five years ago. This was written in 1999. And the big key is that, one, it was never, the auditors were never enforced, these people weren't, these people were getting away with stuff for a long time, and people never did nothing. The police never did anything to do what they should have done. They let the people have an open book. They let the people have an open book and that's wrong. That's wrong and it was wrong. But you gotta do something. If people think they can get away with it, they're going to do it. I tell people, the other short-term renters, what you gotta do is respect your people who got your houses and stuff. It's not right. It's not right. But we've let them get away with it since 1999. We haven't done anything to say enough's enough. You're going to get fined a thousand dollars, you're going to get fined $500. You gotta do something. You have to do it. You look at all the records, Leon's got all the records. He's got all the, I searched, I couldn't even find some of the things that were going on around here. I went to the police station, it didn't have this record, they don't have that record. Stuff just, uh, it was a parking thing, was it a noise thing? Was it an assault on somebody at a place? It was helter-skelter. Helter-skelter, but we've had an opportunity since 1999 to work on this and we haven't done it. We haven't stepped forward and said enough's enough. I know it's hard, damn it, it's hard. But we have to get something going here to solve this problem. And we're not solving it by all this other stuff that we're going through. Just do two things. Enforce the law. Go over there and tell them. I know, I have what I call a two o'clock call. I know, I know when the suicide box comes down. Everybody that I have in my place right now, I have all families and everything. I have all families, I have people coming from Europe, I have people coming from Iceland, I had people that come in from Australia. And just to add to this, even though it looks bad, I've had five people that I have rented, people that come into my place. I show them all around here, this beautiful city. And you know of everything I've done at the, down at the beach and everything, how much I love this town. And I brought these people and I show them different things about the town. Five people have bought houses here because I brought them around to show them what we have and they're, and they're full-term rent, full-term residents here now. And they love this town. But, and I know I don't want to keep going, but I'm telling you right now, it has to stop. It has to be enforced. And people have, you gotta make them pay for it. The, the only way you're going to get the people, hit them in the freaking pocketbook. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Hey. Hey, I would just like to say, I appreciate your passion. You're probably going to have to buy a new podium. I'm just kidding.
It's not that bad.
Having said that, and listen, I will say that Council Walsh and I, at different times, um, with the previous zoning person, before she was the zoning officer, that didn't last too long. We walked around the neighborhood with her separately. And when, I'm very familiar with that Briarwood-Ellery neighborhood. And when we were going up Briarwood and I said, well, let, let's go down this way towards Ellery and Renfrew Park. And she said, no, I don't need to go down there, it's Mr. Rushlow, he does a fantastic job with his. So there's good ones and there's ones that are issues. So thank you for respecting your neighbors.
Yep, thank you. Appreciate that.
Steve Moore. Hello again.
Hi, Steve.
Hi, Steve Moore, 196 Alston Ave. I cannot deliver the kind of passion that Dave did, but I, I just want to commend you on, on what you, what you've done. I don't want to be redundant, I don't want to be repetitive, but I want to reinforce some things. We live at 196 Alston, uh, just up the street from Dave. Obviously, there's been a lot of work done in the town on committees to try to control or manage STRs, but I think the biggest thing on my, in our mind is what's about to happen or will likely very soon happen with the onrush relative to what Newport did in terms of changing the rules there. We have experienced impacts from renters in our kind of general community, you know, noise disruptions. You know, we have air conditioning, thank God, but we, we, we leave our windows closed most nights all summer. We'd love to keep them open, yeah. But anyway, my key points and the things that I think are critical are the changes that Newport enacted are going to impact Middletown. That there, it's going to, if not, if we don't manage things going forward in a mindful, you know, way, uh, the impacts on our neighborhoods, quality of life will deteriorate. Um, I, I want to see the town make informed decisions. Um, I think that the density percentage of STRs where, uh, in a, in a neighborhood, which is where I live and we live, should be absolutely controlled to some percent. I don't know exactly what, but some data was provided earlier and a lot of good research about other communities. I think having it be unbridled and uncontrolled is ludicrous and, and irresponsible. Um, I think there should be some form of a moratorium on growth, not reduction of people that already are doing it, but growth until we figure it out and, and, and do something about it on a go-forward basis. And I think that those are my key points.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Deborah Fegola.
Good evening.
Deborah Fegola, 639 East Main Road. Um, I'm just going to give a little spin on everything we've been hearing from a homeowner, we're, I mean, owner of a short-term rental. I'm going to read off there because I tend to go off the record here.
Deb, could you just, do you mind pulling that microphone down a little bit? Thank you.
Better?
Yes.
Um, after reading the April 18th article that appeared in the Newport Daily News targeting Middletown short-term renters, rentals, I was very frustrated and disappointed. I felt it was time to speak out to the town council and to the Middletown community at large. The article written was basically a sounding board for a handful of repeat disgruntled people who simply cannot accept that they live next to or near a short-term renter, a rental. In our case, our neighbor went as far as having the reporter take a picture of our mailbox, which has our house number. Anyone reading that article in full could figure out the complainer was speaking about our house. The reporter never bothered to check the facts and it seems to be the norm when the Daily News or local media writes about short-term rentals in Middletown. They write about the complaints blindly taking the opposition's word and never investigating the facts of the data. I can only speak to our experience, which I know mirrors many other short-term rental owners in Middletown. My husband and I have been operating our rental well before the neighbor purchased his home. We rent mostly to families on vacation with their kids, family reunions, and various groups such as sailing teams and coaching groups and sometimes women's getaway weekends. Uh, by the way, my own home in Middletown happens to be next door to a short-term renter and we have never had any problems. And if there were, I would communicate directly to the owner to resolve the issue as you do, would do with any neighbor, whether it be a rental or, or not. Uh, this sometimes, uh, this has something we've never been afforded. Our neighbor, which is a term that I use lightly because nothing that he does could fall under the category as neighborly. He watches attentively for any sort of infraction that he feels he could report on. This brings to mind some bullies from elementary school. Uh, his actions are now fringing on harassment with us. The most recent call was to Will Cronin that our trash and recycling carts were put out one hour earlier than they were supposed to. This was done in error by the tenant's daughter, who is aiding her mother who is in hospice care. She was unaware of the placement timer rule. She did this because the cart was full, um, because the carting company did not pick up the previous week. Sean Brown worked with us under the handicap exception rule to allow a carting company to enter the property and pick up and return the cart. This doesn't always happen as it should, but we didn't complain to Mr. Cronin because it doesn't happen often. By the way, many Middletown residents do not always adhere to the cart schedule and Mr. Cronin mentioned that this was the first violation, which we did get violation, of this nature since the inception of pay-as-you throw. Um, our neighbor has been reporting our carts being out early or late a few times before, which once notified, my husband is over there in five minutes, we live five minutes away. Uh, this latest call, however, was not warranted. And I just wanted to give you my point of view as being a short-term renter, owner of what we go through sometimes without facts being checked. But thank you for listening.
Thank you. Okay, um, that pretty much wraps it up for the folks that wanted to speak. Any councils have any conversation or discussion they'd like to have about what they've heard tonight or what they've been thinking about the last few weeks since this came up again? Mr. Walsh.
I was wondering, Marissa, you got some questions from us earlier? No, 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 no.
No, I'm, I'm going to use the bathroom unless we're going to take a break.
Well, then motion recess.
All right. You guys want to recess? Just give us ten minutes, okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
(inaudible)
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 houses and on the other side I would also caution against any grandfathering of short-term rentals. I think there is a way to deal with some of the complaints that we've heard tonight. But in terms of what Newport has done, I don't know that relying on that scenario or moving forward under the presumption that that will continue is the best idea for Middletown.
So the state, so the state did this because financial reasons.
They want the tax revenue.
And so we'd have to change that through lobbying if, if the town chose to do that.
That's correct.
To try and get that changed.
That's correct.
Having said that, in talking to Marissa in the hallway at the break, I said, so how do we, how do we deal with this? And I don't want to speak for you.
That's fine. Luckily, the existing town ordinance already contains provisions that would support the town moving forward with ordinance type of regulation as opposed to a moratorium or a cap that the court and state law have both said that's the way the municipality should be dealing with these issues. Specifically, Middletown has the special use permit option available to it, where anyone that wants to operate a short-term rental would have to apply for such a permit. And as part of that process, already in section 902 of the zoning code, any party that wants a special use permit to operate a short-term rental would have to satisfy the burden of proof that the activity will not cause a diminution in property value to surrounding properties, would not constitute a nuisance, would be compatible with the comprehensive plan, and would not create hazardous conditions. In this context, we've heard from a few different folks who indicated that they lodge complaints with the police department, the zoning officer. That to me would be evidence of a nuisance. You've got some clear-cut complaints and investigations done by police officers. Folks would have an opportunity during the special use permit hearing to come forward and make that presentation and leave it up to the zoning officials and the board to determine whether or not that constituted a nuisance. Same thing with the property value issue and whether or not the use is compatible with the comprehensive plan.
Okay. The density issue has come up, and I think that's something that probably legally, if we can look at, we probably should. So say tonight, somebody said, I think it was Sonoff or Mr. Conerney or Leon, one of those gentlemen said, you know, roughly it's 20% in, in Easton's Point, because that's where the majority of them are located. So having said that, say, I say, and I'm just me hypothetically saying, okay, let's put a 10% density on or 5% density on Easton's Point. Or all over the whole town, not just Easton's Point, all over the whole town. How would that work? How would that potentially work legally?
The density cap is not allowed under the state law that I was quoting from earlier. If you went through the special use permit process, however, that type of objection could be heard under the special use permit, section 902 of the town zoning ordinance, and could be a basis for decision by the planning and/or zoning board.
Counsel Welch.
I don't understand that. You just said it was state law that said we can't do it. But then through some special permitting process, then they can use that as a basis to say no?
That's correct. So the chair's question had to do with whether the town could set a cap, 20% in this particular neighborhood, and that's it. The state law says you can't do that. However, if someone is coming in to apply for a special use permit and folks are objecting on the basis that it's creating a nuisance, it's, it's undermining their property value, and it's not compatible with the comprehensive plan because there, it's too crowded. The denseness of, of people in the summertime is hazardous to traffic and kids on bikes and that kind of thing. That would be the venue for a density argument to be made. But you cannot just put a cap on the number of short-term rentals. Mr. President?
Right. Say if, say, and I keep going, I want to go to density. I know you said we can't do that unless legislation gets changed.
Right.
Upstate. So how would that potentially work? How would the special use permit work with, you know, say, we don't use density, but we know we want a certain number. I don't know if that's legal or not. That's how you would achieve it, right?
I think.
And I know they're case by case, that those special use permits would be case by case. So how do you go about the special use permit process? Do you have them all come in or apply? Or how, how would that work?
Yes, you would have to amend the zoning use table to allow for short-term rentals as special use permit in whatever residential zone you're, you're contemplating. And then it's up to the property owner to decide whether or not they want to go for a special use permit. You might get some property owners that say, forget it. I see the writing on the wall. I don't think I'm going to get an approval, so I'm just going to sell the property. Or you might get all of the short-term rental owners that come in and apply. But you, you would need to, you would need to start from scratch and have everyone apply.
So honestly, I understand what you're saying. So in, in Middletown's case, where the majority of them in Easton's Point, so say one gets turned down on Ryowood Avenue, and then one applies on Alston or street over.
Go to suit.
I mean, once that precedent's set.
They're case by case and
Good answer.
The, the applicant has the right of appeal. So you could be, you could be inundated with appeals.
And this is the only way we can tackle this.
You cannot create a moratorium under this particular state law that I referenced, and you cannot prohibit property owners from using a hosting platform. And again, the way the Superior Court has interpreted that is basically anything besides what I'm talking about, changes to the ordinance or regulation through ordinance, is a violation of state law. In fact, this case that I'm citing, it's the Rhode Island School of Design versus Beegan and the town of Barrington. The judge in this case talks about the changes that Middletown recently made to its short-term rental ordinance and says, this is the type of regulation that municipalities are allowed to move forward with. But this moratorium and cap on density violates state law.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I just want to ask a question to simplify this in my mind, okay? Are you saying that if anybody wants to use a property as a short-term rental, they have to apply for a special use permit? In other words, every single one that would do that would have to apply for a special use permit? Is that what you're saying?
If we change the zoning use table.
Right, but what, but what she's, I, I just want to make sure that's clear in my head. So what you're saying is that for, that we would gain a measure of control by ensuring that every new applicant had to apply for a special use permit?
Yes.
Providing they apply.
And if I, just one other thought. I don't know how many of you are familiar with the civil litigation that went on a few years ago with the Haran Open House in the same neighborhood.
Very familiar.
That was a, a civil action brought to the Superior Court under the same section of the ordinance that I'm referencing now, where the town has the capacity to file a civil action in Superior Court to prevent a particular use or activity from going forward if it violates the comprehensive plan, if it's a threat or a nuisance or imminent harm to the town. So for those 10 or so difficult properties, the town would have an opportunity to move forward with a violation of the special use permit and then bringing that to Superior Court if it wasn't remedied.
Does that mean then, I'm just trying to simplify, does that mean then that what the town needs to do is to make an amendment to the ordinance that says that, that a special use permit is required for every new applicant for a short-term rental?
That is an option that I think is most defensible. You can vote to enact a moratorium or to, to create a density cap and, and move forward with that. I'm just telling you, I don't know how winnable that type of activity would be if it's challenged.
Okay, so, so in effect, we could, as a council, make a motion and pass it to have, have something written into the ordinance that would require a special use permit for any new applicant?
You would need to start from scratch, so it wouldn't be a new applicant. It would be all applicants.
Okay, but what I'm saying is, we could, as a council, make a motion to do that.
Sure.
Which would get us moving in the right direction.
Mrs. Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have some concerns with that. I understand our options may be limited. But I'm concerned, number one, that records can't be found of the evidence that would be needed in an opposition position. You know, whether they, they, the call log cannot be dissected or, you know, there had, there wasn't an actual report written, so there's really no paper trail. I, I think that that's risky. I don't know that we're going to get the desired effect with that action. I also think that the zoning board would obviously be inundated, and some neighbors might come forward, some might miss the mail. And you, you could get this inequity and, and actually, really, not lack of control, but unpredictable control of, of your plan. You know, that was the whole idea, is to manage that business. So my question to you as options, because we're just hearing this tonight, is, you know, some of these operations, as we've heard, you know, they, they deliberately advertise overcrowding. And I know there's some state laws, or maybe their local laws, about numbers of unrelated people. And I know that comes down to enforcement. And, and if you are having habitual violations, you know, can, can that not be a reason to, for a municipality to say to that property, you, you simply can't? I mean, it doesn't seem like the latitude has been explored, given the state law. There's also definitions, you know, that we've heard, you know, this is a business and it's in a residential zone. Even worse, you know, what's a boarding house? It's a, a couple of rooms versus a hotel, which is, is five and multiple guests. How does that fit in a residential area? I just don't know if there's any other latitude other than a special use permit, because I don't think it is, is, I don't think it will give us that end game. Like, this is where we want to be per our comprehensive plan. I'm not sure the special use permit action will allow us to get there.
The other option is to wait and see what happens as a result of the new amended ordinance that went into effect. There's not been a rental season under the town's belt. So that would be another option, the wait-and-see approach. As far as the, you mentioned a couple of points. The regulation of household and unrelated people living together, that is a completely separate statute. That's the Zoning Enabling Act. This is a very specific short-term rental statute that the court said they are, they're different. The municipality has to comply with both. And the special use permit is really the only other option that, that municipalities have available to them. It's a, it's a public process. The applicant has an opportunity to be heard. So do the objectors. It's case by case. There's a right of appeal. And given that the state law is so strict as to what you can do, it seemed like the, the next best choice. But again, the town just amended its short-term rental ordinance. So maybe you wait and see what that effect has this summer.
Does it, does it, is there an option to differentiate between, and maybe again, it's through special use permit or not, owner occupied and non-owner occupied?
I believe that's what Newport did. But you have to be really careful about what the action actually does. If you've got short-term rental properties in Middletown that are not owner occupied, what are you, what, what's the, what's the enforcement action the town is going to take?
So, so it kind of forces, the state law kind of forces the town to either do something that may not be upheld, like a moratorium or a cap. And then in the meantime, if we did something like that, maybe it, you know, wait and see what Newport does. Not wait, but by that time, maybe the Newport thing would be resolved. I don't know. Or, what was I going to say? I lost my train of thought. But it's, oh, or you have the town, like the lady from California said, you know, you go 25 days or nothing less than 25 days.
Sure. I mean, that gets you around state law, which talks about, I think it's 29 or less. 29 or less. Yep, that's right.
Okay. Mr. Welch.
Marissa, a couple of things. And I can't remember exactly what Mr. Redfern said in the beginning, but he mentioned the fact that the way he read our zoning, that it's not, a short-term rental is not acceptable use in a residential neighborhood. I mean, he made it sound pretty clear. I don't, I don't know exactly what it says, but is, what, did you hear what he said?
Yes.
Do you have an opinion on that?
I believe the, I believe the question is that currently, the use table does not include a reference to short-term rental and indicate whether it's a permitted by right or special use permit or prohibited use. Is that right? Didn't we, as part of the ordinance amendment, include a separate section for the definition of short-term rental as well as where it's allowed in the town? We would have had to do that. We wouldn't have enacted a, a part of an ordinance that didn't indicate where the use was allowed.
I don't know that answer. My next question is, you're saying that state law says that everybody has the right to rent their property, right?
I'm sorry, say that again?
That state law says that everyone has a right to rent their property.
State law says that municipalities cannot prohibit someone from offering the unit
Okay.
on a hosting platform.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah, it's clever.
Does that differentiate between someone that is a resident of the state or a resident of the town?
It does not.
They don't care.
They don't care.
Okay. Personally, I am not in favor of waiting and seeing because we did have changes to the ordinance. But, I mean, I think as we heard tonight, the, the problems are not, I mean, we keep going data, data, data. But I don't think the data that's out there is accurate for all the reasons that were said tonight. I think that we have problems all the way along in the process. And that, for instance, the, the noise ordinance is out there, right? There's a whole procedure on how it has to be done, but it's never, no one's ever going to be in violation of it. It, it just, it's not, it's not a useful tool. So it's the same as, and I'm, and I'm making this up, but I come to Marissa's house because you're making noise and your neighbor complained. I'm the, I'm the cop. I show up and I say, Marissa, you gotta, you know, keep it down. You go back in the house. I leave. Now, if you don't call again, is there necessarily a report citing that I came to your house because of noise? Or is it like, if we gotta come back again, now you're getting, now you're getting cited? So that's a problem. There's a lot of pieces that are problematic. That's, that's where I'm having a problem. I, I certainly don't want to wait and see. And I certainly, I, I don't think that what we have is going to alleviate the problems that we heard tonight.
Mr. President?
That's not a question.
Ms. Von Villes is next.
Yeah, I, I agree with what he says in terms of waiting and seeing. Is there any reason not to bring forward an amendment that requires a special use permit? In other words, we're not acting on it tonight. But is there any reason that you can think of that we shouldn't propose that as a, as a change to the ordinance or to an improvement of the ordinance? Is there any reason not to do that? Because I'm just thinking, we go on and on and on and on forever and nothing ever happens. And I'm real tired of that. So is there any reason not to do that?
I can't think of any.
Well, then I will make a motion.
I don't think we're done discussing.
Okay. Well, she can still make a motion.
Oh, okay.
I mean, if she chooses to, then we can continue to have discussion. Mrs. Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could you read that phrase again, the state law about not prohibiting anybody from presenting or, or being on a platform, a rental platform?
Cities, towns, or municipalities shall not prohibit the owner from offering the unit for tourist or transient use through such hosting platform or prohibit such hosting platform from providing a person or entity the means to rent, pay for, or otherwise reserve a residential unit for tourist or transient use.
I got the first part. You can't prevent people from being on the platform. But then it, it, it moves and it talks about the platform can't prevent someone?
Right. So that section is not particularly relevant to this situation. But read as a whole, the, the clause that deals with pay for or otherwise reserve a residential unit for tourist or transient use is the section that applies here. So you're right, the, the part about prohibiting the hosting platform, oh, excuse me, prohibiting such hosting platform from providing a person or entity the means to rent. So.
Actually, it doesn't really say that the owner must rent for short-term rentals.
So the way that I'm, now that I'm reading this out loud for the second time, what it actually says is the municipality shall not prohibit such hosting platform from providing a person or entity the means to rent. So a municipality cannot order an Airbnb
Right.
to take something down.
It's not, it's not creating a cap.
It's both. You, the, the town can't prohibit the, the posting and the town can't prohibit the platform from posting.
But we would be prohibiting the owners.
Right, that's included.
Oh, it is included?
Yep.
Can we get a copy of that, please?
Sure.
But.
Oh.
Mr. Logan.
But if we remember the state law, everybody that has a short-term rental who's using a platform has to register that with the state.
Right.
There's your loophole. I don't care what that says. They have to register. We can't prohibit. There's nothing you can do about that. Nothing you can do about that. Now, what I will say is that we went through this process to recreate an ordinance. We enabled in said ordinance the ability for citations to be issued through the zoning office and through the refuse coordinator, which was never done in the past. We had exactly one month and we had some hiccups. We've yet to test that out. We've enabled people in the town to go issue citations to address the nuisances. They're going to collect the data as they visit the houses. We will have robust data after the season. Now, I'm not saying we don't proceed with the special use permit. I think there's some utility there with special use permit. But you haven't yet looked at how this ordinance is going to be enforced in real time. It just changed, and now we want to change it again. When we went through the trouble to understand what the problems were, look at how we could solve those, enable people to do their work, do the jobs that we're paying them to do now, and then take other issues downstream, like parking. We haven't even talked about parking. Parking's an issue across the entire town. We've referred that to the planning board to solve that problem. Look, this doesn't get solved overnight. I get the density issue. Density restrictions aren't going to solve the nuisance problem. They're not going to do it. Because guess what? Even if I limit it to 10% per plat, we're still going to have that house next door. It's not going to immediately solve your problem. Robust and rich enforcement, on the other hand, which we've enabled, starts to address the issue, which hasn't been done in the past. I know. It hasn't been done in the past. But now we've enabled people to do that job. Let them do the job. Let us understand what happens. Let us explore, explore that special use permit process as well. Because that's not going to happen overnight either. That's going to have to go through committee. It's going to have to go through public hearing. You're talking weeks. We're going to be mid into the summer season at that point by the time it gets enabled.
Mr. President, I wasn't done. I just wanted to get.
I'm sorry.
No, no, no. That's all right. It was relevant segue. I just wanted to let you know that I wasn't done.
I'm sorry.
Can I go?
Yes.
Yeah, listen, we're going to let Mrs. Flynn finish.
There were just some questions that we had forwarded to the solicitor that I wanted to get quick answers to if possible, Marissa. So one of the questions was for homeowners' associations. Are, are they allowed in their documentations to limit the members of the homeowners' association in, in taking on this activity? Or, or does, does the state law reach into their type of business as well?
No, the state law applies only to municipalities. And homeowners' associations are allowed to enact bylaws and regulate their properties as they see fit.
So another question then, along those lines. So then our zoning board, when given.
I'm sorry, counselor. Let me caveat that last answer with, they, homeowners' associations still have to comply with state and federal law to the extent that they are relevant. But, you know, equal opportunity, discrimination, that kind of, of policy. But this state law does not touch homeowners' associations or other parties.
So they can prohibit short-term rentals in their membership?
Yes.
Okay, development. Okay.
I think so.
So a, a, another question was, as new applications go through our permitting process, planning board, zoning board, do, do they have, I think I know the answer to this, but do they have the ability, our zoning board, to look at an application and to preserve the residential nature of wherever the application might be, to say, we approve it with the condition that the property would not be used for short-term rentals or vacation homes?
No, because that prohibition would violate state law.
So let me ask you this question, because this, I understand what you're saying is the law, and you're the expert in that, not me. But so they're saying homeowners' associations can say, nope, we don't want you. But the town can't?
Correct.
Protect its people?
That's correct.
Mrs. Von Villes.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't see the point of complaining about what the law says or doesn't say. If the law is the law, we have to comply with the law. If, if there's, we have, as Mr. Logan said, we, we worked on improving the ordinance and we did that. But I asked the question, is there any reason not to add an amendment which requires a, a special use permit? Okay, so why would we not do that to get that moving? Okay, and with, with continuous enforcement of the, of the ordinance as it was changed, whatever? And, and, I mean, we'd be doing something. I mean, we're just talking and talking and talking. Let's do something with what we tend to.
To, to clarify, Mrs. Von Villes, this would be a, a draft of an amendment to the current short-term rental ordinance that would require special use permits for all short-term rental operators. I just want to make sure what we were, so it's just a draft at this point.
We're asking for a draft.
Are you making a motion?
I'm making an emotion that a draft be prepared to bring back to the council for discussion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. A second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Okay. Thank you for your expertise tonight, and thank you, everyone, for your input.
And Mr. Mr. I just want to clarify for the people in the public that it's a, an amendment to an ordinance, which means it has to go through two public hearings, two readings before anything. readings before anything is done permanently, so there'll be more ample opportunity for input.
Okay. One last thing, Sean, that I'd like to add to this. I don't know if we do an executive session or we do it in public, but we need to bring, I'd like to bring in the police department, whether you can do that or however. We need to talk about enforcement. I don't know if that's legal or that's something you do. Are we out of our purview with that?
I think it should just be done in open session. I don't have an...
Okay. I just wanted to be clear that...
Well, I want to be clear, like, we hear about, like, we heard tonight, a number of complaints about noise, noise in the middle of the night. Noise in the middle of the night measure doesn't necessarily violate the town's ordinances. I think there's a certain expectation that something's happened and then we're just trying to go out and thump someone into compliance, and that's not what we do. There's actually rules and there's measurements, and, and again...
Folks, folks, we're continuing on here.
So I would rather just have the discussion in public, because I believe that the police department is enforcing the ordinances. I believe they're enforcing them appropriately, and...
You know, I'm stuck, I guess maybe I'm stuck on, I don't know, like, I agree with Tom. I don't think we ever solve the noise issue unless, you know, they come back in the decimal reading. Most of the time, they're not going to come back. But, you know, but...
But what we've implemented is, last summer, is we are taking measurements with each noise.
And I understand that. So quiet down, the cops are here. So what good is that? I know it's the only thing we have, but what I'm, where I'm going is, if we, if there is even a second or third complaint, maybe we need to look at that part of the...
But if it doesn't, if it's not a violation, and I'm just going to go to the noise, and I guess this gets back to the, to the use. The difference is, so tonight, tonight's a bad example, but, but even tonight, I'm going to go home and my neighbor's going to hear me get out of my car at 11 o'clock. She's in bed, she's, she's trying to go to bed early because she's going to go to work tomorrow. You know, that, but if that's happening every, every night during the week, it gets annoying. And I think that's a lot of what you're hearing is that whoever's in the, again, the, you know, the person in the short-term rental is on one schedule, the resident who lives here year-round is on another. I mean, we get similar complaints with, I work at night, so I sleep during the day. Marissa, you know, has a different lifestyle. I get mad, or I talk to her eventually and say, look, I work at night, Marissa, you got to give me a break from going on your porch in the afternoon and playing loud music.
Why am I always partying in these scenarios?
Right. And I'm always working late at night, so, but I, again, I think there, I think the police department is doing what they're supposed to. There is a new protocol. They have the noise meters. We review those weekly, and, you know, basically the issue is that the noise doesn't rise to a level where there's a violation, and, and we can have the conversations, it just...
That doesn't mean it's not a nuisance, and I'm going to give you a perfect example.
That I need a nuisance ordinance.
Then let's talk about that, because here's the issue that I, that I just recently experienced. A house around the corner from me sold, so no activity for a while. Two weeks ago, for the first time, it started on a Thursday. Bunch of noise, I look over my fence, I see people partying, early afternoon. I'm like, all right, whatever, maybe it's new homeowners and they're having a party, no big deal. It continued on three days in a row. So I wasn't sure whether it was a short-term rental, any of that stuff. So now I know it is. Last, this past weekend, but that doesn't mean that I have to close my window, just like you heard tonight, just because it doesn't meet the decibel level. That's not right.
I don't disagree with you, and that was my, I think, part of how we got here and what I said the last time. We can enforce the ordinance, but we just can't, I need something to enforce. I mean, we have attorneys here, I mean, it's, we don't even have to talk about in the short-term rental space. If, if there's not a violation, I'm limited. I'm just going out and, will you please stop?
Right.
And if they don't, then I'm sort of stuck.
Understood.
Paul's upset. Paul doesn't like to hear your party. Well, it's under the decibels.
Yeah.
And they don't, they don't care.
Okay.
And I think that's, that's what you're hearing, is they're not, it's not, it's not like you and I are living next door to each other, and over the long term, we have to get along. They're leaving on Saturday, and a new group's coming in.
I know. Mrs. Flynn.
Thank you. So just from this post-conversation, so I guess that the solution there is maybe to consider a lower decibel that is on our noise ordinance, perhaps. I also wanted to ask, Marissa, for habitual offenders of, or violators of our ordinances that are short-term rental owners, can we put in the ordinance, if you are a habitual offender, if there are two or three or whatever, six, a half a dozen complaints in a certain time period, can they then lose the right to allow, to be allowed to have a registration and have a short-term rental?
Through the special use permit process, you could include conditions under any approval like that. No one outside after 10:00 p.m., more than two complaints, and superior court enforcement. And then you leave it up to the judge about how the state law and the town's ordinance fit together with the comprehensive plan.
Because I feel like we're trying to do things, but it's like everything we're trying to do, based what I heard, I heard tonight, doesn't have a lot of teeth.
Could I also add on the draft?
It would sort of be just like the model house. Marissa and I had this conversation before. So you have the multiple violations, so what do we do? We go to Superior Court and we ask for an injunction or...
Declary judgment and injunctions.
We're getting better at this. So then, and then the judge is going to tell us to come back and, because there's no immediate harm, and then that'll be August and September, and then by the time we get our hands around this, it's two years later. We've been down this path, and again, I go back to what I said at the last meeting and what I just said earlier. It's, you know, it's, it's the use within the residential neighborhoods, the issue that you've got to, you got to resolve, which I think you are addressing.
I just want to make sure the, the police, the town council, everyone's on the same page as far as what the expectations are.
Yeah, no, and I communicated on an issue today, and it was clearly stated to the police chief, and he understood it, but I think...
Well, and I know that it's Chris, Chris's point, that this is just enacted, but in the past, it's been, I had residents, whether it's true or not, I have no reason not to believe them, is the fact that, well, do you call the police? Yeah, I called the police. They told me that they're only here for the weekend, just deal with it. Whether that's true or not, I don't know, but that can't happen, you know? So that's why I want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Yep.
I think there can be some harmony here. We just need to kind of close this gap more.
I had, I had one other thing that I wanted to throw on the table since we're talking about drafting ordinances, is that we heard earlier that most of the, many of the violations happen between midnight and 6:00 a.m., and that typically it's the weekend, you know, renters, and we might want to consider extending our minimum to not, to, to a longer timeframe. It's like, instead of having short-term rental be anything under 31 nights, it is, it must be over 30 nights.
Okay.
It's just more ideas that were on the table. Now's the time to focus on the ones that...
Well, I think she drafts it, and not when she's partying, but when she drafts it. And so we get a legitimate document, just kidding. And then we can tweak it from there and get input. Mrs. Santos.
Thank you, sir. While we're on the subject, enough has been said. Let's, let's continue with the docket so we can finish it. Enough.
That was it?
Sorry, yes, let's continue. Let's go with the docket. I've had it.
Okay.
Thank you, Marissa.
Marissa, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Oh, I know what it was.
What is it?
If we're going to bring in the police chief, why do, why don't we bring in the zoning officer?
That's fine, too.
I can sit down.
That's fine, too.
Thank you.
Okay, folks, we still have a meeting, so we appreciate it. If you could enjoy your evening outside those doors, that'd be fantastic. Thank you.
John Brown.
Oh, Jesus. She's good.
I agree.
Okay.
Take care, my love.
I don't know if you heard me.
Hey, guys, we need to, we need to take this outside, please.
I mentioned to Paul that when the police come in, the zoning officers should be...
Yeah, I'll have everybody here.
Good, thank you. I don't know if you heard me.
I absolutely did. Bye.
All right, you ready?
Yeah, let's move on. It depends on the north, on the west.
Okay, welcome back, Council of Toronto.
Yes.
Number 26, memorandum of Council Flynn and reference to marijuana update.
I know where we are. Motion to receive said memorandum.
Second.
Motion, a second, receive. All in favor?
Aye.
Mrs. Flynn.
Okay. The second meeting in a row, you've got me just after I've taken a chocolate in my mouth. So the, this is simply a request from the town, from the solicitor or town administrator as to where the marijuana legislation is at the state level, because we do have to be conscientious of the fact that if we do need to put something on the ballot, there's a time limit. So this is an update.
Okay.
Request.
Got a question? I'm sorry. Would you please...
Oh, yes, yes.
Make sure you use the microphone, Mr. Sayer.
The, the docket item is to request an update of the marijuana legislation at the state level, because if a ballot item is going to be required by any municipality, there's a timeframe. So the request is for an update on that marijuana legislation.
Okay. Second. Yeah, you, Peter will do that. The, the state law, that, the draft that you've seen is not going to change.
It is not going to change.
It's going to change.
So if...
So there's going to be, in order for you to, that's the word we've gotten back. And, so if you, right now, so if you want to opt out, you'll have to do a referendum.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Sayer. Question to our town administrator, is that another docket item, where we actually talk about that? Is that a public hearing? What exactly is that?
I think we would wait to see what happens when the legislation starts moving. I don't, I don't know if Wendy has any information from the Board of Elections or anything like that, but...
No information from them right now.
I would maybe just ask to just continue this item.
Okay.
For Peter.
You okay with that?
Oh, absolutely.
All right.
Just the legislation hasn't moved, and as Attorney Sayer, you know, communicated, there's, it's, it's, it's going to at some point start moving at the General Assembly and likely pass in its current form.
Is the option that it wouldn't pass and, and it would not go forward at all? Is that the other option?
I think that's unlikely.
I understood, but that would be the other option?
Yes, or it could change. I mean, I just don't know.
Or it could still change, okay.
I mean, it's, again, it's, it's been heard at the state, it's sitting at a committee, and the way they've been doing things in the past, when they've held something at committee, it used to mean that it was dead. Now it just means that it's being held until the right time, and then it rockets through for a vote, so...
Okay. So continue to win, so we're clear.
What would be your recommendation, Mr. Brown, till the next meeting in May, which would be the 16th, I believe, or...
I would say so, because if the General Assembly's planning to be out by the second week in June, all of this will, will happen quickly.
Okay.
Okay, excellent. Number 27, memorandum of Council Flynn and reference to traffic safety, neon gas.
Motion to receive it said memorandum.
Second.
The motion, a second, receive. All in favor? Aye. Mrs. Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. President. This was brought forward by a concerned citizen about the traffic at Neon Gas Station at the corner of Aquinic and East Main Road, and drivers taking essentially a left turn into the station, if I have that right, and it's kind of a risky move, given what's in the intersection. So I believe that it was going to be discussed or looked at. Mr. Brown was taking it to some department heads. I'm just wondering if anything has come of that, because the summer season is going to be upon us before we know it.
Well, I think you sent an email, right? Citing the decision?
I'm not sure. I can, I can tell you, so, the only thing that's, so what has transpired is there was a sign at the entrance that's been removed, that it was a navigational sign essentially showing drivers how to get around. There's a small concrete island at the entrance exit on the East Main Road. That sign has been removed, and I think the assumption was that was some sort of a beacon, you know, letting people know they could take a left turn into the, the gas station. But after that, there's really nothing to do. They're permitted from Rideout to have the entrance. There's no restriction from the planning board, so, so that's where we're at. There's, there's no change.
Mrs. Santos.
I'll make this very short and sweet. I do agree with Mrs. Flynn and Teresa, there is a problem. I sat in the Bank of America lot for two days. Here's what they were doing. You've got people coming out of Dunkin' Donuts. They want to go gas up, so what do they do? They cut across all lanes. All right? Or you've got somebody coming out of the gas station, and he wants to go to Dunkin' Donuts, so he cuts across four lanes. People coming out of Wyatt Road, people headed west, people headed east, okay? That's one entrance. Then you've got the Aquinic. You've got people coming out. They're not looking at either way. You've got people coming up Aquinic Avenue, you've got people coming down Aquinic Avenue. That is an absolute nightmare. If you've ever sat in one of the parking lots and see what goes on there, you wish you had never seen it, because something is going to happen. And what's going to happen? You're going to have an emergency wagon coming out of Wyatt Road, and someone's going to come out of the gas station, and you're going to have a collision. Any way you look at it, it's a dangerous situation with that gas station.
So I think it was dangerous before, and...
Gas station there. There was a gas station, but it wasn't like it is now.
And they, the issue becomes now that they receive permits necessary from Rideout, they receive permits required by the town. Those decisions were made, and a gas station was built with an exit entrance on East Main Road. So I can certainly go back to Rideout and see if they can modify it somehow, but I think at this point, you know, the developer, the gas station, has a exit entrance on that, that side of the property, which they're, they're permitted to have. I don't, I don't know that that's an easy bell to unring at this point.
And we haven't even entered into the summer season. Okay.
No, I don't, I don't, it's interesting, just while you were talking. So if I was going to my mother's house, I would normally have just gone down Wyatt Road, but now I take a right down Aquinic Avenue, which I never did, so I, myself have changed the pattern in which I drive, so I don't drive through there. But, but again, it's, it's a permitted curb cut essentially, so...
Mr. President?
It's because he likes how, how smooth the Aquinic Avenue is on there.
I love, I love the smoothness of it.
I don't know, I dodge it with all that construction work down there, but, thank you. So, Mr. Brown, I, I find it curious that if the people who are living in and using these roads are observing dangerous behavior, risky behavior, that Rideout would not be receptive to checking it out. What are they going to wait, till somebody's dead?
I would say all the intersections on our main roads are dangerous and are classified that way. I think if you...
All the intersections on our main roads?
They're dangerous, yes. I can remember, so I live off of Brown's Lane. I can always remember when Stop &amp; Shop was looking at putting a gas station in the parking lot, there was a traffic engineer here, and they talked about how dangerous it was, but they said that people were willing to take the chance to cross over the road. The roads are, they're... The roads are, they're, they're congested and they're, they're busy. So, um, we can look at the traffic data, but I, I think you have to be realistic in how dangerous our roads are, you know, and, and that particular area, which was congested before, it's.
They've approved it.
They've approved it.
Unless you have data, I don't know if they'll change it, especially a curb cut on a main road. You want to speak, you're going to need to come up to the microphone, please. You know the rules. Mrs. Spangler, you've been here long enough.
You're right. I have been here long enough. Thank you. Just really quickly, Teresa Spangler.
I'm sorry, we talk things through and that's the way we're going to continue to do it.
I know.
Whether it fits your timeframe or not, I apologize.
I understand that, but it would have been respectful if you could have moved to our agenda item. But anyway, um, in regards to this, as far as I know, um, there, when I, the planning board was doing this, they had discussed the, um, Neon had said they were not going to have a left-hand turn going in there from, coming from the, um, east towards the west of East Main Road. So that was part of the discussion because I sat through those meetings for hours and they did agree to that. And that's the, their other thing, as we'd, someone had said last time, there's no cut in the yellow line for there to be that turn. So Neon did have, that discussion was a big part of it, of not turning left-hand turn, and they agreed to that. So when they described what they were going to do with that e- exit, they were describing it to just be an exit going towards Wyatt and East Main and then having it for the right-hand lane to be able to turn right only. So the way they said they were going to design it was it's going to be a sharp curve, so it'd be a right-hand turn only and then a right exit only. That's the way it was described at the planning board and they sat there with the design and everything. And the original design had a curve going both ways, so it, it looked like this rather than a straight cut to be able to take a left from, um, across from Dunkin' Donuts. So I, the, and I don't know if the original designs are available in the town, but that's how they had it described. So you would literally have a curb cut that was circle, you know, partial circle like that.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I think one of, thank you, um, Teresa. I think one of the questions is when the, when the Neon gas station got to the zoning board, did they describe it the same way?
I don't know. I mean, I have to go back and listen to those and watch those meetings, I guess.
Well, I, I'm, I'm, I think it's a little disheartening to hear that all of our intersections are dangerous, but I think this one is aggravated, as Mrs. Santos said, by, um, the fact that now there is a, an active gas station and mart there and it's going to be, um, risky. Not something to watch.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Number twenty-eight, resolution of the council reference to FY twenty-twenty-three state budget allocation for funding Middletown Public Library.
Motion passed said resolution.
Second.
Motion is second to pass. Is there any discussion?
The library board is seeking your support, um, for this resolution, which encourages the General Assembly to fully fund, uh, the dollars that should come from state aid from the state to the town for the purposes of funding the library. This has been an ongoing issue for years and, um, one which we fully support and, uh, the library board does also.
Any further discussion? This is Von Villas.
Yes, I, I just wanted to say that, um, the, the library board discussed this at their last meeting and it was their request that this come forward.
Okay, excellent. Motion is second to pass, rest said resolution, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Town administrator, number twenty-nine, memorandum of finance director through town administrator and reference to this section improvements at Berkeley and Green End Avenues.
Motion received said memorandum.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Mr. Brown.
Uh, this is a recommendation from, uh, the administration to award a contract to Fussin O'Neill to, uh, study and develop a solution for a roundabout at the intersection of Berkeley and Green End Avenue. Um, as we discussed when this was brought up in a public hearing, we did go back to the engineers and asked them to relook at the price. Uh, it was reduced to forty-one thousand nine hundred dollars. Uh, Fussin O'Neill is doing the work down in that area now. Uh, so with the data they've already collected as well as the, uh, the work that's being done to, to address stormwater issues, they, they are, it's to the town's best interest to keep them on board uh, so that we're dealing with a single firm. Uh, Warren's here to answer any specific questions about the scope of the project and the discussions he's had with the engineers. Uh, but we would suggest or recommend that you, uh, award the contract this evening.
So I just want to be clear, so we're just studying this, right? Or is this act, roundabout actually moving forward?
This is study and a design to thirty percent.
And, and who made the decision for that?
You did.
Council did?
Yes.
To go forward with the roundabout?
Yes, that was your decision.
Trying to recollect that.
Yeah, me too.
I did not do this on my own.
No, I'm not saying you did. I'm just trying to recollect the, the actions of Ford.
I actually thought.
Uh, I, I heard, I heard, I heard him say that. Okay, it's just change is difficult, you know? When you want to, we're going to spend all this money, but maybe we should take other measures to, to maybe mitigate the, uh, the issues there. Mr. Welch.
When can you start digging up the asphalt?
So, thanks.
If it were to all go smoothly.
Uh, this, this proposal is for four months, so the scope of work here will be completed in approximately four months. It gets us a show and explain thirty percent design plans, which the plans, uh, at that level would be suitable to submit to DEM. That's the level of, of design that this contract will bring it to. Submit it to DEM, you probably have another three, four months with DEM. You're eight months out, so I would think it's going to be close to another year before we're talking about moving forward with construction.
Warren, how would that tie in when they potentially talk about raising, uh, Berkeley Avenue?
So the initial Mayfair River watershed, uh, study did not have any changes to that intersection as far as the elevations were. But if we were to change those elevations slightly, we can't change, uh, significantly because of the COVID that's there. The COVID is going to stay, the COVID is going to be used as basically the orifice or the control for the Mayfair River project. So we're not going to be doing any changes, no changes proposed to that COVID right now. So that would basically stay there. Um, and this would blend right in with the road raising project. So I guess that's the answer in, in short. Mr. President.
Mr. President?
This is Flynn.
Thank you. Uh, I'm almost in agreement with you on my expectation. I'm surprised that we're going to thirty percent drawing because I thought part of the, the research was to determine if a roundabout was even doable there. You know, what, because they would get the data, then they would decide what would be the best design. I know that we did get from the public hearings that, yes, they thought a roundabout would be good, but I didn't really think it was up to the public. I thought it was going to be up to the data.
But that was the first proposal that you rejected. Then we had the public hearing. The decision was made to proceed with the roundabout and to reduce the cost of the project by eliminating the other options. So this is, again, we're, we're traveling the exact path that the council had laid out for us.
Yeah, I, I don't.
I'm just having.
I don't believe you. I just thought that through the process of we need data to determine what is appropriate to be done there um, to now that it's, it's more defined than I, than I also thought.
That was rejected.
I know that we'd rejected one because it seemed an exorbitant cost and we thought we had a lot of data on file, if I remember correctly. Then we had the public hearings to get a sense as to what the public wanted. And I just didn't realize that it, it would be to, to, with, including drawings. I thought it would be more of a, okay, this is what we're finding, this is what you can, what if they find they can't put a roundabout there for some reason? Then what?
But I think we're reasonably certain a roundabout will fit there.
Okey-dokey.
The project includes three public meetings, so there'll be, there'll be a meeting, there'll be a presentation to the council, there'll be a presentation, uh, to the public. Um, so there'll still be an opportunity to comment on design and, and the functionality of the, of the roundabout.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, for me, I travel that road every day and almost every day. And to not be able to take just a left on the Paradise, on the pro, on the Paradise, coming from Green End, having to go around.
Oh, my goodness.
I mean, I, I understand that, but, so maybe we should put one on the corner of Fayal.
It's okay with me.
No, it wouldn't be. So having said that, let me just finish. Having said that, we may spend all this money and not do it. That's the other problem I have with it. So if that's okay with you, then fine, it's not okay with me. And the other thing that's not okay with me is we haven't looked at the simple measures to shorten that, shorten that up and maybe cut back the brush so you can see when you're coming out of Pro- Paradise, if you're going to take a left or go straight. Because the other side is, there's no issue on the other side. It's one side issue. It's coming out of Paradise to take a left. That's the only issue we have there. That's the only issue.
So part of the analysis, there'll be four, no changes, four-way stop controlled, traditional traffic signal, which we know that won't work, and then the Martin Roundabout. So those, those options will be sort of vetted out through the process with, with Fussin O'Neill. They have to do that as part of their design, as part of their criteria, to prove that a roundabout will work or it will not work. And it will function better than any of the other, other options that there may be.
Uh, Dennis.
We'll have to go thirty percent to determine whether a four-way up sign is going to work or not? Oh, because we're going to look for upside, but you know, a couple. Thing, and that's, that's what it was.
If, if you have to take it to a thirty percent.
Yeah, but you have to take it to a thirty percent design before you can make that decision?
Yeah, before I answer that, I think I'd probably, we'd have to get Fussin O'Neill here to answer that question.
Sure.
I, I, I wouldn't think so, but I would hope that we'd get somebody else that's here tonight.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Santos.
Dino and that was unavailable for tonight's meetings.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Hall, was the fire department in on this? Because they've got some.
Yes, the fire department knows about this. We've discussed it. We've discussed ways to get fire apparatus around the roundabout, through the roundabout.
And they said, okay, they could do it?
They haven't said okay yet, but they're, they haven't said no, we're, we're, we're definitely against it. But will be accommodations made for all the fire apparatus to, to get through the roundabout.
Okay, thank you.
It'd be ADA compliant, bicycle safety, so on and so forth.
Sorry to interrupt your presentation, Mr. Hall.
No problem.
Go right ahead, sir.
I am just about done.
I don't know, what's, what do you guys, what's, what's the pleasure here? Because we have a resolution that, that's on the docket.
Are we on a time limit to approve this? Do we want to hear from the, uh, O'Neill and Fussin? Fussin O'Neill, excuse me. Or do we?
No one knows our town better than us.
Can somebody play back that we've already done this? We have already done this.
Always stop, never.
Just want to be sure, that's all, because I don't, I don't recall.
Uh, it was back in August, I think.
August.
August meeting.
Okay.
It's just a fair observation that if you determine that a four-way stop is actually going to work just as well.
And I think we did the public hearing in January or February.
Yes, and the, and the ne-
And the neighbors seemed to like the.
The neighbors were overwhelmingly in support of the roundabout.
Right. They didn't have the data.
That's the meeting I was at. I remember that when the ne-
Overwhelmingly.
There was some opposition when you come down, when you come down the hill. Anyway, what's the pleasure of the council?
Motion to pass said resolution.
Mr. Viveros had his arm up. I'm not sure if you would want to entertain that, Mr. President.
Couple minutes, Mr. Viveros, getting late. I know that's not your fault.
Antobor Viveros, one, um, forty-five Bayview Park.
You almost went one-ten.
Yeah. It's been a while. Um, we had a proposal to do something about that back in two thousand nine. And I think, uh, the police, according to police report, we had like zero point one five seven accidents a year there. Now, we're going to spend all this money to put a roundabout in because people having a problem making a left-hand turn, coming out of Berkeley, going west. Uh, maybe you ought to try four-way stop signs. And then it can all go along, like, rather, rather than spend all this money for a roundabout. That's, you know, I mean, let's, let's spend, spend a nickel before we spend a dollar. Try, try a four-way stop, so everybody has to stop and then everybody takes their turn. And, uh, maybe that'll solve the problem rather than a roundabout and how many thousands of dollars are we going to spend? And we're, we're already, we're already, budget's already, already, uh, tight anyway, so that's my, that's my proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, yes, ma'am.
One minute, I will, sixty seconds. Teresa Spangler, one thirty-two Peckham Lane, I almost hit the wrong address too. We have talked about this for a long time and, and I think, you know, I look at what you just did with Third Beach Road and Wapping and Mitchells and how we put the three-way stop sign there. And at first, all of us down there were like, oh, my gosh, you're forgetting about a stop sign being there. It is working very, very, very well. I was here for those public hearings, talking about that. I have to be honest with you, I don't remember the vote of the roundabout going through, but I, I, and I did stay for the whole thing, but that doesn't mean it didn't happen and I don't remember. But personally, I, I, in, in my, I drive that road all the time. If we could lose some of that brush, which I had mentioned at the public hearing, and tried a four-way stop sign in between while we're waiting, if this is going to take another year, why can't we try a four-way stop sign? Tighten that up a little bit. Um, I do go down Paradise Avenue a lot. And that new, um, painted lines has gotten better. I have seen people actually stop where they're supposed to, to turn right onto Green End. And so you're coming out enough to see a little bit better, but if we could get, I know it's private property, but maybe we can go talk to the folks very nicely and say, we'll do the work and, and have our guys go in there and trim some of that brush, put the four-way stop sign into it, to test it. In the meantime, while we're waiting for, um, to see what's going to happen with this roundabout, while we're doing the public hearings and things like that. It's, I think it's worth, like, Mr. Um, Viveros said, of, uh, saving the dollars for now and really seeing if a four-way stop would be successful and safe, because I've been driving that road all my life too, so.
I see the way you drive.
It's not about change, it's about safety. What about school buses on that roundabout? That's another thing. I just was thinking about school buses.
School buses, police cars.
Our big fire truck. You have an emergency down at Second Beach at Surfers End in the water and you've got, you know, this circle of roundabout and cars all over the place and.
Yeah.
So that's my worry about it. I think we, as a, as a citizen, I, I'd be worried about doing this. Thank you.
Mr. Welch.
This is extremely frustrating right at the moment, extremely frustrating. We have gone through this whole thing, said all this, listened to everybody and came to the idea that Warren can proceed and now we're going through it all over again. I don't understand that. And for everyone's standpoint, Mr. Santos too, is that the ladder truck can very easily negotiate a roundabout.
Okay.
Same as a cul-de-sac, a police car, a rescue wagon, and the rule is you cannot blow through a stop sign. You have to come to a stop until it is with your lights and sirens on and safely proceed. You cannot just blindly go through any intersection. That does not happen.
It doesn't? You're sure?
It does not.
Okay.
My law's not supposed to happen. What I'm saying to you is it, it is perfectly reasonable for any of that apparatus to go around that roundabout.
Okay.
And they have to stop anyway.
Okay.
Or mostly stop.
Okay, so we have a motion and do we have a second on the passing resolution?
You haven't even, he didn't finish. So he can start all over again, make the motion. He didn't read in the resolution.
Okay.
But he started to make the motion.
All right. Number thirty, resolution of the council reference to water contract Fussin O'Neill for the traffic analysis at Berkeley Avenue and Green End Avenue.
Motion to pass said resolution.
Second.
A motion is second to pass. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose?
Oppose.
I oppose. Okay.
Amen.
So what was the, was it to pass four to three?
Yes.
Okay. Number thirty-one, memorandum of an operations of operations facility manager through town administrator and reference to recommendation to allow Surfline to install webcams at Second Beach.
Motion received said memorandum.
Second.
Motion is second to receive, discussion.
Uh, Mr. Cronin's here to assist with the conversation. Uh, we have an offer from Surfline to essentially replace the cameras we have down at Second Beach with, uh, cameras that they would, they would run. We would still access them from our website. But it would be an upgrade, uh, to what we currently, uh, provide, and we would also receive $100 a month for having the cameras at the location so we can avoid the cost of a hardware update. Uh, they take care of the, the data part of the program, and our residents still get to see, uh, the beach, and it will be better quality than we're providing right now. Peters reviewed the contract. It does allow us to cancel a contract, uh, when, when we want, uh, with 30 days notice. And, uh, it seems like a pretty good opportunity to improve the service, uh, while not costing the taxpayer any dollars. In fact, we'll, we'll realize $1,200 a year.
Question?
Mrs. Flynn.
I'm just curious as to what's in it for this company. Are they advertising or something?
Uh, Surfline is a, uh, surf forecasting, um, company. So they.
So scientists?
Uh, no, recreational surfers.
Oh. Do the surfers pay for their?
That's correct, yeah. Surfers pay for a subscription, and, um, and then they can get a, you know, the waves are, you know, waist-high at First Beach. You know, here's the webcam.
Okay, thank you.
So we're just upgrading?
Essentially, yeah, we'll have a better service. And people, people like to look at the cameras. It's, they're, they're used all the time. I know the beach commission routinely, um, is asking us for, for better imagery down at the, the beaches. Uh, people who don't go to the beach want to look at the cameras and see the water, or if there's a storm, they want to see the waves. So it, it really is a good opportunity to have the infrastructure upgraded at no cost to the town.
Okay.
Good question.
Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. President. So it'll be streaming on our website, correct? And they'll be streaming it on their website, too?
Correct.
So they will be utilizing that as part of their offering to their clientele.
Yeah, that's correct.
That's why they're doing.
That's, that's correct, yeah.
Right.
They, they're going to give us the ability to embed it on our website. So we'll be able to, um, you know, maintain a, a website, uh, or webcams like we always have.
And where are the cameras going to go, where they are today?
The three cameras are going to replace the three cameras that we have. So Surfers End at the pavilion and, um, at the gate, main gate.
So how do cameras help our residents?
Um, well.
Because there's something about with cameras that just, I mean, I know we have them there already, but it just doesn't sit right. The beach is a place to go and just relax, and, you know, you want somebody seeing you at the beach or whatever in a camera. I mean, I, what do our residents gain by this?
Yeah, so.
I know it's no cost. I get they gain that, but.
So the patrons are able to check out, uh, beach conditions. Um, they can check out the webcam and see the traffic conditions, if there's a line. Um, and not just, not just residents, but, you know, anyone that comes to the beach.
I don't think we need cameras, and no offense to you, Will, to know that if it's a nice day and it's a weekend, that there's going to be a line.
That's correct, but for those days.
Our residents don't have a line anymore because they can go in the, in the resident gate.
But we still have a lot of people that come down and use, use the beach. Um, and some people come down on those days that aren't always 95 degrees, and some people drive over an hour away. So you can take a peek, even when you're halfway down, and be like, you know, line's looking pretty good, or, oh, man, the line's looking pretty, pretty thick. Let's stop lunch, so.
The cameras were sort of born out of the recommendations from the Beach Advisory Committee, the subcommittee that was formed by the council originally. The committee had discussed that we were going to put up the sign boards throughout the area. That way, people could check those before they headed down to the beach, uh, to see if there was a line. You know, the signs are going to be all around, but this turned out to be a, a more proactive way, uh, you know, to give that real time. This is how full the lot is. This is how long the line is. And, and it, it does turn out to be one of those things. What are, what are the wave conditions at the beach? That's, that's primarily, I think, what people look for is, is whether there's surf or not.
Yep.
Okay.
If it's foggy on the beach, if it's windy on the beach, all the conditions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. Breaking out my beach, uh, information. Okay. So, uh, number 32. 31, rather, uh, Mr. Vice President.
Motion authorized Surfline upgrade and maintain the three web cameras at Satuus Beach.
Second.
Motion is second to receive. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody oppose? Number 32, memorandum of finance director reference to financial report, nine months ended March 31st, 2022.
Motion received said memorandum and report.
All in favor?
Aye.
No down steps.
No, but he walks up with a lot of confidence, like he has good news to deliver. So, Mr. Tangway.
Good evening.
Yes.
Mr. President, members of the council. Nine months financial statements. I do have a quick presentation PowerPoint to summarize my memo. For the general fund, your revenues exceeded your expenses by $1,190,000. You have a few positives for your revenues. Your tax collections are a little over $1 million more than the prior year. The building permit revenue is $168,000 higher than the prior year, and it's already 132% over the current year budget, and we still have three months left to go.
Wow.
The hotel and meals tax is recovering from the COVID, and it's, uh, $644,000 higher than the prior year. For the school department, the revenues exceeded expenses by $2.52 million. This is broken out between the general fund, which is their operating fund. The revenues exceeded expenses by 3 point, almost $4 million. For the other funds, the restricted and capital projects, the expenses exceeded the revenues by 1 point, almost 1.5 million. The general fund, I mean, the school general fund, as you know, is projecting a deficit of 1.27 million for the nine months. And a lot of it, you, you see that the, the revenues exceed expenses. The projection is also taking into account their encumbrances for the year, and that's where that number comes from. The Parks and Recreation Fund, the expenses exceeded the revenues by $315,000 compared to 695 in the prior year. Current year capital, uh, restricted income is $323,000 compared to zero the prior year. The current fiscal year beach revenue is $196,000 higher than the prior year. For your sewer fund, the revenues exceeded expenses by $262,000 compared to $10,000 unfavorable last year. Lot of that is from the capital that has yet to be completed. For your refuse and recycling fund, the revenues exceeded expenses by $244,000 compared to $240,000 the prior year, so it's tracking pretty close to the same. Your pay as you throw bag sales are $21,000 lower than the prior year, and the permit sales are 31 higher than the pre, same time in the prior year. I also want to say that you asked earlier about your discretionary fund balance. It's $12,800.
Awesome. So why do you think the bag, is there any indication, well, Will's here, too, why the bag sales are $21,000 less?
My initial thought was due to COVID, people were home more.
Right, okay.
And now they're going back to work.
Okay, makes sense. Everything's, everything's tied to COVID, huh?
A lot of this is, yeah.
No matter what business you're in, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Question.
Mrs. Santos.
Thank you, sir. Mark, you made a statement answering Mr. Welch's answer to the contingency fund on the council. Where did you find that amount? What page?
So that, I did that year-to-date.
I'm sorry?
I did that year-to-date, so it'll be different from what you have here. I did it because you passed other things after these financials.
So I can't use the figure that's in there?
You can, it's close. It only changed a little bit.
Okay.
But I wanted to give you as it was today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Do you still want where you can find it? Would be on page 13.
13, right at the top of the page.
Okay.
Well, it's rolled up in, in 12, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, any further questions?
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Did you want to say something, or? No, I appreciate that. Thank you.